Ding. Hello. Yeah. I didn't really mean that pause. Good evening and welcome to the October 28th Bennington Select Board meeting. We are in the firehouse and third floor and it is always nice to see a good crowd here. So, thank you very, very much. We will start by having our fellow, my fellow, my name is Jeanne Jenkins and I chair this board and I clearly have had a long day. I'm looking at Shirley. Shirley's had a long day too. We're doing window dressers this week. I would love for my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
I'm Ed Woods.
Hi, I'm Tom Haley.
Good evening, I'm Clark Adams.
Jean Connor.
Thank you all. And also with us tonight is our town manager, Stu Hurd, Nancy Lively, who always takes excellent minutes, and she's now at the back table, and Josh Boucher, who is filming this live for Cat TV, which we appreciate very, very much. So, we will start as we always do with the pledge of allegiance. Would you lead us, Ed? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tom, would you read our vision statement, which guides our work? Thank you.
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have two sets of meetings, let's see, we have two sets of meetings, minutes, October 14th and 16th. We also have the warrants and we also have liquor licenses. For the purpose of discussion, would someone please make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you.
A second for discussion.
Thank you. All right, any discussion?
I just want to point out one error that I caught and corrected with Nancy already and it's on the October 16th minutes, line 200, it should be Shires instead of Squires.
Perfect. Great.
I have a correction on the same meeting, line number 175. That comment from me should have read, "This board reviewed data from the town staff in determining why people leave."
Okay.
And I have one more, same meeting, line 60. "We have been shown that there is no additional burden on taxpayers," and this is what this should have read, "because money being spent in other places won't be necessary and will be reallocated." Period.
What line is that again, please?
Starting on line 60, page 2.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
I have a couple on the warrant.
All right, go ahead.
So, page 5, Stu, I don't know if you're ready to help with this, it's very minor, but it looks like an accounting issue. 401-996, it says expense reimbursement for this. Shouldn't those expenses be expense to the rate, Chairman Ledger? Rather than lumped together? Or does the person indicate what they were for?
Sorry, what line is that? I'm sorry, Ed, where?
I'm on line page, page 5.
It's the warrants, it's not the minutes.
Sorry, I'm on warrants.
Yeah.
Warrants, page 5, 401-996, $253.23.
It was obviously a reimbursement for money being spent. I'm not entirely sure what the expense was. It could not be normally something that I would.
Am I right that whatever the expense was belongs in a correct expense account rather than just expense reimbursement?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand, Ed.
Well, we can't tell what the expense is for.
So, the account number is the 014130 dot 742? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, 4130 is generally the fire facility.
Okay.
Fire department budget, 742 would be meals, so meals or mileage.
742, I see 724.
Now, look, here.
Thank you, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that indicates where it goes, okay. Page 6, halfway down, 402009, I just don't know what progress billing is for.
RHR Smith is our auditing firm.
Thank you.
New last year, right? This is their second year with us?
Yes, this is their second year. And they are now probably one of, one of the major municipal auditors, as well as school, district auditors.
Gotcha, thank you. The last one on that page, 402016, I just am curious about where we replaced a window or windows.
Those are in the police department.
Thank you.
We're replacing the big windows.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Great, other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Page 5.
Are we on warrants?
Still on warrants.
Okay.
No, we had moved on. Page 5, 401995, MTT Bank, says $42,136, equipment borrowing, P and I. What exactly equipment are we borrowing against?
Principal and interest.
Principal and interest?
Yes, principal is the larger number, the interest is the smaller number.
Okay.
So, that's a loan payment, we're not borrowing against it, Clark.
Okay, I'm just reading what it says, equipment borrowing, principal and interest, that's all I'm reading. Okay. And, all right, my other question has been answered already, so I have no other questions on warrants at this time.
All right, anyone else?
Yes, I didn't have any questions on this one in particular, but if I had in the past, I found it very helpful just for my fellow colleagues to email in advance and get the questions, so it doesn't take so long on the warrants. So, in the future, if any of my fellow colleagues are so, feel so inclined to do that, it really does take a lot of time out of our meetings. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
If I have the questions, the public might though, so I'd like to ask them and have them answered in public, thank you.
I do think, I think to Sarah's point though, it is often helpful to ask Stu ahead of time, so that he's not trying to figure out, at the same time we are, what's going on, and then, and then in some cases, it becomes a minor point, and in other cases, it still makes sense to.
Right, yeah, in the past, I've brought up things that I felt the public would want to know about, and other things, I was kind of like, oh, you know, what is this? Is this just minor, or is this something that I should bring up? Yeah.
I'd just like to remind everyone, they should not be emailing the entire board, they should be emailing Stu.
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you.
Please, thank you. All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to public comment. A reminder that public comment is for the purpose of sharing items that are not on the agenda, but would be of benefit to the, to the full community. You, please try and keep your comments to less than three minutes, and Jean is the timekeeper and she has the handy dandy 30-second warning. And also, please know, there should be no, be civil, you know, there should be nothing personal that's being said, and, and that's, and, and when you finish your comments, please sit down at the end of the public comments. If there are questions that, that come up that we can easily address, we will do that, okay? And so, and remind me to ask at the end, if there's anyone that didn't get to sign up that wants to sign up. All right, so, Clark, you're again on the public comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, Clark Adams, Bennington, Vermont. Two meetings ago, Mr. Ed Perkins presented a document addressing issues of town plan. And having read that document, I'm still wondering when and how I and the public may see a document or a series of documents that indicate public meetings/hearings were held to discuss approving a new town plan, and when a meeting was held in which the select board had a specific, clear statement of purpose to approve a town plan, not dealing with amendments, but actual clear statements that the purpose of the public hearings and the select board vote were to address and approve a new town plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, let's see. Sarah Beth Ward, on Ben High. Mike, what's your agenda item before you start?
My what?
What's your agenda item?
My topic is I want to know about the Ben High project.
Okay.
Has the time clock started? How much time do I have left?
[laughing].
What a multi-bastard. Oh, excuse me, how much time do I have?
I'm having to try to reset it.
Thank you. I'd like to know when we're going to have this meeting. Zach is here tonight, Zach Hale, and the memorandum that you guys got about the changes that everybody probably hopefully knows, and I think we should do that sooner than later, because the pull plug date for this project, the safety net that Dan Monk's always talked about, is December 31st, because you have to give a 90-day notice to do this, which would be March 30, 31st, or whatever. So, I'd like to know when you're going to have that full discussion. And as everybody knows, I think it's kind of gone from 20 million to 40 million to now 50 million, and it's time to have a full discussion. You don't have to reiterate what's happened over the last three years, or whatever it's been, but we need to know where we are and how we're going to pay for it. And I'd also like to know, who is our CPA on this project, and/or clerk of the works for the town, to know that how we're doing this is right or wrong? So, I'll start out with that. And I'd also like to know, who is this Chris Gilbert that's in this? I mean, it's like trying to find, you know, the old Where's Waldo? I've never seen Chris Gilbert, never heard from him, not that he's going to call me personally, but I've never seen him at a meeting. I don't even know why he's even in this. If this project is a solid real estate project, one of us, either the Hales or the town, should have bought him out a long time ago and said, "See ya." He only paid 146 for it, $1,000, and it's time to get rid of him if this project is going to go on. I think he's part of what's making this very confusing for everybody. So, that's all I'll say at this point, but I would like to have that sometime before the snow flies.
Thank you very much, Mike.
All right, thank you.
All right, so Sarah Beth, do you want to go next?
Yes. Sarah Beth Ward from Bennington. That was, one of my big questions was when we were going to have the presentation, because two weeks ago, I was under the impression that hopefully it was going to be at this meeting, but I see that Zach Hale is here tonight, so I wasn't sure if he was here to give a presentation or not. Also, who actually owns the property right now? Who is the owner of the property? And I'm sure it's been answered many times before, but if I could just know.
We'll do it again.
Who is the owner of the property?
Okay.
And if it's not the town, why are we still paying taxes on it? And why are we paying, why are we paying rent on it if we're not the owners right now?
Okay.
And that's it?
Thank you. All right, let's see. Carson, come on up.
Can you use this one, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I needed my glasses. Good evening, my name is Carson Keisinger, I'm a resident of Bennington, and I am here tonight as the reference and adult services librarian at the Bennington Free Library. The library was recently awarded a $1.5 million grant. The grant is from the U.S. Department of Treasury through the American Rescue Plan Act, and the grant money will be used to complete building envelope repairs and install a new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. We are thrilled. Vermont 211, the information and referral program of the United Ways of Vermont, will be hosting an information table at the library for one hour each month through March, with the second session scheduled for Thursday, November 21st, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Anyone is welcome to drop in and get in-person help finding resources for their everyday needs or for difficult topics. The library is winding down its Vermont Reads activities. Vermont Reads is a statewide community reading program of the Vermont humanities. The Vermont Reads 2024 book is Gather by Kenneth M. Caddo. The library has just a few free copies left. We partnered with the staff of the Mount Anthony Union Middle School and the Turning Point Recovery Center of Bennington by providing them free copies of Gather to use within their organizations. The library's last Vermont Reads activity is a community mural making and art making gathering. This Saturday, November 2nd at 2:00 p.m., all ages are welcome to attend. The second Fix It Fund Community Repair Event, co-hosted by the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance and the Bennington Free Library, will be held Saturday, November 9th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the library. Community repair events reduce the amount of waste sent to the landfill by promoting repair and reuse. We are still looking for fixers, including electrical, small appliances, toys, ceramics. Anyone who enjoys repairing items, please contact the library by November 1st. I save the best for last. Get your tickets now for a thrilling staged reading of murder by the book on Sunday, November 17th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Bennington Theater. Set in the quirky town of Two Spruce, a group of volunteers stage a murder mystery to save their beloved library, only to be interrupted by a real crime. Tickets are $25 each and are on sale online, as well as at the Bennington Bookshop, the Bennington Free Library, and the John G. McCullough Free Library. All proceeds will directly benefit both libraries. For details about everything happening at the library, please visit us at 101 Silver Street, call 802-442-9051, or see our website, benningtonfreelibrary.org. Couple pieces of paper over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carson, and congratulations. It was, you guys did a lot of hard work for that grant, and that is amazing. It's amazing for our community. Thank you very, very much. All right, next up is Jim Carroll, to talk about housing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm having a very strong sensation of déjà vu, which you may understand. Anyway, my name is Jim Carroll, I'm a resident, and I enjoyed our, the last listening session a week ago, and I recall two people who were really pretty, I don't want to say irate, but concerned about drug activity, and I recalled a $7 million project through Shires, and the tipping point for me when I was on the board is that Shires required a criminal and a credit background check for any new residents. After that, I got thinking about it, and I happened to run into two landlords here in town who employ the same practice. And I recall asking Chief Doucette if he could provide me with the number of police calls to Shires' housing properties in contrast to other parts of town particularly. And the chief had told me that with one area of town, it was over 30 or 40 in a six-month period, and by contrast, the Shires' property, there were only two police calls. One was for a welfare check, and the other was mistaken identity. Now, along those lines, I got thinking, here's something that's clearly working to keep criminal activity down, drug activity, and it's in practice, and what I'd like to suggest that the board adopt, or create, is an ordinance that would require landlords to do a credit background check, it wouldn't, or criminal background check, it wouldn't prohibit landlords from denying housing, but at the very least, it would put landlords on notice about to whom they're renting, and I think it would go a long way in helping make our neighborhoods safer where this is being employed.
Jim.
Thank you. Is it up, or I still got?
Keep going, keep going.
Nevertheless, you know, I think we're all concerned about making Bennington a better place, and we clearly have landlords who are demonstrating a way that we can do that, and I hope the town will at the very least contemplate this and hopefully adopt an ordinance that does this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that didn't sign up that would like to speak tonight? We have lots, okay. Leslie, Deb?
Hi, Leslie Addison, North Bennington, Vermont. So, I want to make a couple of comments about process and protocol, so bear with me. Regarding meeting timeframes, at the last meeting, a select board member requested that meetings would have a reasonable and predictable end time. This request was made with noted passion. I for one, wholeheartedly support the request as a member of the listening public. Meetings that run over lose listeners by way of simple fatigue. People have the right to hear all the topics at hand within a reasonable timeframe, people often slip out early, which is another clue, and the board needs to respect invited guests. Also, you've set in place, which I appreciate, community listening sessions, people can easily submit comments on the town website, and people can call more board members. And also, inasmuch as I appreciate the intent of another select board member who offered to stay well into the wee early morning hours, there's a point where that approach is unproductive for focused discussion. So, also, I would hope that you'd work together as a cohesive board to strategize solutions on our behalf. Regarding agenda, as, again, as a listening member of the public, I appreciate the board's attempt to maintain the flow of meetings, and I mean this respectfully. When I hear what sounds like debating prior decisions that had a vote, it feels unproductive and uses valuable meeting time. So, I encourage those of you who stand in disagreement of prior decisions to use information to guide your future votes, and I hope you will take caution in fueling mistrust of good people who all want a better Bennington. You may disagree on the strategy, but fueling mistrust only serves to erode other people's character, and respectfully, we are all better than that. And this includes those of you who are commenting on Facebook as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Deb?
Debbie Matt from Bennington. About a week ago, I was sent a section of an article from a newspaper related to Rutland. I believe it's called the Vermont Biz. And in there, they have $8 million to create 1,000 apartments over the next five years. I believe it's called Roofs Over Vermont, and it said $3 million for housing with unit, one to four units, and the $5 million towards the larger. If Rutland can do it for 8 million, why in the world is it going to cost us 50 million to put in 37 apartments?
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Zach?
Thanks, Jeanne. My name is Zach Hale, and I'm a resident of Bennington. So, I just wanted to come and just communicate with the board and, and the public about what happened last meeting, and just kind of collaborate to move forward. So, basically, what we're trying to do is come to the board, on Ben High, by the way, yeah, so we're just trying to come to the board one last time with everything that we know. And what happened at the last meeting is, we've been, we've been doing very good at timing our, our presentations and everything, with everything that we know. Right now, we're, we're collecting all of the term sheets from all of the various funding sources that we have right now, and that provides a very detailed explanation of what the expectation is from us. And we were set to get everything in by October 15th, which I think was the same day that the board meeting was, or right, the, the next day. And so, I think, looking back, we probably should have waited to get all of those documents so that we could make sure that we were presenting the right stuff. It was Friday morning after the packet had already gone out, that I actually got some term sheets and was able to review them with counsel and attorneys, or counsel and accountants, and fully understand what that, what it meant. And it's not anything wrong, and we're going to find, like, it's all, all about getting this information and then just reallocating resources to make sure that, or, or changing structures to make sure that we're utilizing resources most effectively. And so, we just had to make some changes, and that is all it is, and we, we need the next meeting to be the last one, so we're just working through a few things, and, and we'll be back as soon as we can. So, I just wanted to communicate that and mention that, and then also a couple of things I've heard tonight, just mention that the owner of the property is being very patient, Chris Gilbert, and he's, he's been really, really easy to work with through this whole process. And if I still have time, I'll just mention the Roos Over, Roos Over Rutland is actually what that program's called, and that's actually 8 million in low-interest loans. So, it's, it's funding that is going to help subsidize building housing. There will be additional private investment that's included in that. So, there's going to be more than just this 8 million for 250 units, is what they expect to make out of that, so. All right, cool. I'll communicate and make sure I come back as soon as possible.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate everything, so.
Anyone else? Public comment? Okey-dokey. Thank you all. Oh, Mary, sorry. Hands in the back of the room are always hard to see, all right.
Sorry about that. Mary Morrissey, Bennington. I know I'm probably not supposed to direct this at Zach, but.
No, you can't. Absolutely, you cannot.
Okay, then I will just state it right out, by the speaker that just spoke, I, it puts a little bit more concern to me what he said. At this point of the project, you should pretty much know those funding resources by heart, and for it to be changing from an increase on the square footage at this point is very concerning. When we were told this summer that the, in September, the project would be going forward once one more grant was coming in, and I believe that was the Brownfield grant for 1.5 million. more grant was coming in, and I believe that was the Brownfield grant for $1.5 million that came in in September. So it's very concerning. And I've heard from quite a number of constituents this week saying, what is going on with the Ben-Hi project? We need to have not a last meeting. There needs to be some discussion as to where we truly are in regards to constituents that are now very concerned about the taxes and how they may rise according to the increases that are being asked. And it would be nice if Mr. Gilbert at some point could come to a meeting as well so that we know who this person is that has, for the last several years, has had us kind of paying for a project that has some questions. And I'm hoping that can happen sooner than later.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment now that we're on? So I don't want to get into a back and forth. Okay. Yeah, I don't want to get into a back and forth. I will, I will remind, Sarah mentioned this in the la, at the listening session, and I think it's well worth everyone that has questions about this looking at. All the funding sources for all the five presentations, or however many there have been, are on the town website. The funding sources are listed in excruciating detail. What is happening now is sort of that last piece where everyone has said, yes, this is what we're committing, either in grants or loans. And so all those pieces of paper that are like the official pieces of paper are being signed. It is not that we are still up in the air on, or it's not the, it's not the Hail Resources is up in the air on where that funding is coming from. They are just making sure, as they have done all along, that everything is done in an incredibly meticulous way. So if you are in any way curious about the funding sources, they are available to you. And like, color-coded, as I recall, they're color-coded as to whether they've, you know, whether they were in process, whether they had already been completed. But at the completion, there has to be a signed agreement with every single one of those many, 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 more than 30, more than 30 funding sources. So that's, you know, that's where we are.
Can I just add to that?
Yeah, and I was going to say, and, you know, like, Chris Gilbert is a private owner. That's like saying everyone on Main Street should have to come in and make sure that we all gaze eyes on them in case we don't know them.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's like, it's, it's an invasion of a person's privacy that doesn't seem warranted.
I think it's important to note...
Please do not interrupt.
I think it's important to note that the Hales are working in public to keep us informed. They weren't ready at that last meeting. They'll be ready when it's warned for a public discussion next time. I think it's, we are grateful that debate has happened, discussion has happened in this meeting room in public. There's no mystery about it. It's a public-private partnership. The Hales are bringing public and private funds. I think we have to see it through and be patient. There's no mystery about it. There's no new terms that are being agreed to. There's no comparison to a project in Rutland. I'm grateful for the Hales taking their time and doing it transparently and with a lot of thought.
Yep. All right. With that, we have, we're concluding public comment. And thank you all for your comments. All right, next up is our fantastic Charter Review Committee. Jackie Matts is going to update us. You guys have done, like, the last listening session was just blew our socks off.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Jaclyn Matts. I'm chair of the Town Charter Review Committee, also a resident of Bennington, Vermont. So we've been, we've been busy since the last time that we came and talked to you all. I believe we've now, at last count, spoken with 26 different stakeholders. We've received 19 comments from the public. Nine of those have been on the topic of changes to voting in town. So a large percentage of the comments we've received have been on that topic. And that was also one of the more discussed topics at that public forum that we held. So that's an area that we found that this community has been really passionate about. In addition, as you all know, on October 15th, we lost a member of our committee, Jim Fires. He was an excellent member of our committee, so valuable, the perspective that he brought. It's really set us back a little bit, and we miss him. Our committee discussed whether we should seek a replacement for his position. We looked at sort of the workload that's remaining and sort of weighed that against the time it would take to onboard a new member. And so we haven't come to you and asked for a new member. But I do want to raise that, it raises some concerns about meeting quorum at our meetings. At most of our meetings, typically, there is a member that is not in attendance. At many meetings as well, there is members that may have to leave early before all agenda items are completed. So we're getting close to that line. We haven't had an issue yet. We hope we won't, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention now. So talking about the remaining timeline, we met last Friday with counsel to discuss a number of questions. We'll meet with them again next Friday. Some of the questions that we brought to counsel, it's a new term for me, they called "questions of first impression," which means that these are items that have not been covered before in Vermont law. So there's no basis for clear answers, so she needs some additional time to prepare an informed opinion on some of those topics. Once we conclude with those, we have, I've directed members of the committee to begin drafting portions of our final report. So we'll begin reviewing those drafts on November 8th. We'll follow that up with our second public forum on November 13th. There are posters in the back here that I hope you will all feel free to take and display prominently around town. That meeting on November 13th does overlap with a discussion about the new roundabout outside of Bennington College. We tried to avoid that. We brought that to their attention, but sometimes these things are unavoidable. So I do apologize if anyone wanted to attend both meetings. Choose us. And of course, we're still committed to delivering our final report to you all by November 29th. I personally will be unavailable on December 9th. That's the select board meeting following when our final report is due. I understand at the end of the year, some things get shifted around with the holidays, so I will be available the 25th of November or December 16th. Or if you'd like to hear from this committee on December 9th, my vice chair, Rebecca Sentner, is available on that day, and I'm sure she can speak to these issues as eloquently as I can. I just want to give some insight on how we've been evaluating a number of these charges. Some of these topics, we've found that there's sort of two pieces that we're looking at. One is, is this a viable change to consider? Meaning like, can we do this? Right? And then, on the other hand, is the question of, should we do this? Right? That's a question about the values of our community. And so some of the changes that we may put in the report, we will likely be recommending based on, this can be done, and we think the voters should decide whether it should be done, the values of our community. We've also received a number of public comments on topics that we would love to look into, but at this point in the process, we're having to accept that we may not have time to sufficiently evaluate some of these issues, some of these items, in order to make an informed recommendation. So we'll highlight those in our report as well. Maybe that's something that this board would be interested in taking up, or maybe that's a topic that the next Charter Review Committee might consider. On the topic of the next Charter Review Committee, we'll also have a section in our final report on lessons learned. It's an opportunity for us to put in writing some of the things that have worked really well for us, some of the challenges that we've come across. And so then the next committee, hopefully, will have a leg up, sort of a head start on getting their work done. So again, I'd like to thank the members of our committee, the Charter Review Committee. They've all been wonderful, really dedicated to this process. I want to thank our liaisons, Stu Hurd and Dan Monks. They've been, they've been really great, actually. It's been super helpful to have someone that can kind of fill in the gaps of our knowledge on town processes, and I appreciate that they've been willing to do that. But I also wanted to recognize that some of the topics that we've discussed have been related to their position in the town. And so I want to recognize that they've been really great at holding off and abstaining when appropriate while we're discussing those topics. And I have so much respect for them doing that and how they've navigated that process. It's a tricky line to work, and so I personally appreciate the way that they've conducted themselves in our meetings. Finally, I want to thank the public. The input that we've received from this community has really, it's been so valuable to us. It's been a focus in most of our discussions, all of our discussions, right? It's really guided the work that we've done. And personally, I've just really enjoyed having conversations with just regular folks around town about their vision for the future of Bennington. It's really, it's been the highlight of this work for me, and I look forward to continuing to have those conversations with the public, whether it's on Charter Review-related topics or other town topics. It's really, it's been wonderful. So in closing, our next public forum, November 13th, 6:00 PM, in this room. And we'll look forward to having a final report to you on November 29th. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? No, ask them. Are there any questions from the community?
Yes, I have one.
Mike, come on up.
Yeah, can you, in the charter, can it be put in there that this select board or the future select boards cannot get into a deal with something like this project without a vote of the people, especially where it's going to be millions and millions and millions of dollars? That they don't have, have to have a vote of the people first before they start it? Can that be put into the charter?
I don't know.
Is anybody up there now? Stuart?
I don't think so.
Well, when do we have a definite answer on it?
I think, Stu, yeah, let the town manager finish, because he is in a position of handling contracts every day.
You're asking to make a specific amendment to a document that is basically the constitution for the town that will control future boards and how they approach projects. And I, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for a charter document to attempt to do that. I think each individual board has an opportunity to make those kinds of decisions with conversations from the public. But to try to put it into a concrete format and prohibit it from happening ever again, I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't say prohibit it from happening. I said have a vote of the people first before it happens.
I think that's a decision that a select board can make.
Right. But I want to know, and could you find it out legally, so she can know if she could do it or not, if it can be in the town charter? The future select boards cannot go out and do something like this, spend our money, commit us to projects that this select board will never live through to see the final payment on.
I'm just going to say, so one, there was a lot of misinformation in the statement you just made, but second, you asked, stop, Mike, Mike, please let me finish.
You accused me. What was the misinformation?
The misinformation is that we are committing the town to a lot of, a lot of funding, a lot of costs that we won't live to pay for. And that is a completely inaccurate statement. We are committed to ARPA, to putting in $2.5 million in ARPA money. So it's just money, it's money that is already committed to this project, and we are committed to, with the town vote, to using the $400,000 assessed value of the senior center as the other $4,000 in this. And so that is, so, so Mike, we're not having that conversation. What we're having is you asked a question, you asked a question, could something go in the, in the charter? The chair of the board said she doesn't know, she, it's noted, and she will take it back. So that is really, that is, this is an update from the Charter Review. This is not, this is not a back and forth about whether you think a project is worthy or not.
I'm not saying that, Jeanie. Jeanie, you're putting words into my mouth.
Mike, your answer, your question was asked, and it has gone to the committee that it goes to.
You corrected me, and I want to have a response to your correction.
Okay.
The money that this is going to cost us in future budgets goes well beyond what you and I and everybody on this board is going to probably be around to pay.
Again, I think you're inaccurate, and I, and this is not the time to discuss it.
How much is it going to be in the budget?
This is a different agenda item. This agenda item, when Ben-Hi, when, when the, when Hail Resources comes in to have the Ben-Hi conversation, then you will look, they will explain their funding sources...
I'm not talking about Hail, I'm talking about the charter.
Exactly. So the only thing, so it's been given to Jackie.
I'm asking, can this board, can they put it in that this board, or any other board, cannot put in future...
I heard your question.
...payments on a project? That's what I want to know. Stuart says he doesn't know.
And what I've told you is we've referred it to the Charter Review.
Find me the answer. You're the chair of the select board.
Mike, I'm going to say this one last time. It has, we are having an agenda item right now, which is an update on the Charter Review.
And I am...
The chair of, please don't interrupt me. The chair of the committee is sitting, is standing right here. She has your question. She will take it back to the Charter Review Committee. End, end of conversation. It's not for us to figure that out.
Yes, thank you, Mike. I will ask Friday when we have counsel.
I appreciate it. I think you know more than our chair does, so thank you.
I should hope so.
I have a comment to add.
Okay.
As far, when it came to the Ben-Hi agreement, Bennington voters did have rights under Vermont state law and the agreement.
This is a Charter Review update agenda item. This is inappropriate for you to be asking this question now.
He asked a question about people having rights before projects. Bennington voters did have rights. But at the first discussion here in March 2022, when the chair authorized Stu and Gilbert to sign the agreement, no one told the public their rights. And it's critical people understand how that was handled. So you had rights, no one explained your rights. And anyone who wants to disagree, I'd be glad to explain the contract to you, that the public, no one explained it to the public. And when you hold your first meeting, and six days after that, someone slides a notice and the banner and says, well, you have 30 days to sign a petition. Who would sign a petition six days after the first meeting where no information was provided?
Can we move on to the next agenda item, please?
I want people to know they had rights, and no one explained what the rights were.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, any other questions for Jackie on the Charter Review update?
It might not be for Jackie, it might be for the town manager, but this is more of a process question for, thank you for coming to speak, this is really a nice update that we receive. I've been getting questions similar to Mr. Bethels about the process in the Charter Review. So when somebody, Charter Review, comes up with something to change in the charter, how does that occur? Can you kind of, town manager or Jackie, can you kind of just walk through that process?
Do you mean like inside of our committee?
Yes. Nope, when it comes to...
So once submitted or reported?
Yeah, yeah, kind of just the whole, you know...
Sure, sure. I'm happy to go over that. So once our committee makes our recommendations in a report that we'll furnish to the select board, at that point then, the select, and I'm happy to be corrected on this, the select board will review those recommendations, potentially make some adjustments, decide which of those recommendations this board also agrees with, have two public... which of those recommendations this board also agrees with, have two public hearings on those changes. At that point, those changes will be placed on the town ballot in March, then the voters of Bennington will have an opportunity to have their voice heard on these matters. Anything that has passed both, all of the above, our committee, this board, and the town voters will then go to the state legislature. At that point, the state legislature has the opportunity to make their own changes that, again, don't require a vote of our town citizens, so they can accept or reject or make any changes that they like, and then, and then it gets passed into law.
That was perfect. I'm going to add one thing, just because it may come up as a question, and when the voters get to vote, it will be, each change will be its own line to be voted on.
Yes.
That was a very, very good summary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Set into your question?
Thank you. I've been receiving a lot of those questions and trying to go through the whole thing and then, yes, so thank you.
There's a lot of steps in the process.
I believe that's also on the website. I believe the process is on the website. Jonah, I'm looking at you. If it isn't, it might have been a part of the charge, but if it, with the charge, but if it isn't on there, if we could add it, that would be, that would be super, and then you won't get so many questions.
I'm happy to have conversations.
So, okay, other questions? From anybody? No? Then thank you and thank the Charter Review members that are here tonight. You guys are doing very, very good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we next come to our favorite new topic, traffic calming. Well, I will say, you know, six months ago, none of us knew the term traffic calming, and now, and now that is where we are. All right, so, and we have Mark Anders from Bennington County Regional Commission with us tonight. We are looking at the traffic calming policy. This is a first reading of this policy. So we'll start first with the select board. Any, this is, this is slightly amended from, both in terms of, of organization and a couple, a couple things that we pointed out last time that we were interested in seeing change. And that's, that's what this traffic calming policy is right now. So questions or comments? Jean?
Yeah, page two, at the top section where there's number one, number two, and number three. The third one, posted speed is not more than 35 miles an hour. So am I to interpret that any road that needs traffic calming remedies will not be considered if the speed limit is over 35 miles an hour? And if that's true, why is that?
Okay, and we did, I think Dan did answer this last time as well. And it was, so I don't, so Mark, Mark, please, come on up. All right, talk to us about why we shouldn't be using traffic calming measures if it's over 35 miles an hour.
I don't think there are many town roads that are over 35. Most of the roads that are over 35 are state highways in Bennington. And also, the kind of traffic calming measures we're, have been talking about are not recommended for roads where the speed limit is 35, more than 35 miles an hour.
So a traffic, a speed table when you're going 50 might make you go airborne?
Yeah.
But I thought we were talking about other things other than speed tables and so on and so forth. We are, but we're talking about, we're talking about town roads, though, so.
Okay, but if, if one of the reasons why it wouldn't be applicable on roads where there's more than 35 miles an hour, I get that, but if some of these other traffic calming remedies don't involve something that would make someone become airborne, why wouldn't we want to do that?
Well, it gets trickier with higher speeds. You know, so one of the other things we talked about was narrowing lane width and moving center line, and it gets trickier when you're in a 40 mile an hour plus zone to do those things.
Okay.
You know, the exception might be radar feedback signs, probably you could put those when, at higher speeds. I've seen those on, you know, big highways. But the other measures would be difficult to do.
Okay.
Can we drill down on the first point that you're, one of the earlier points that you made, Mark, about town roads being 35 or lower, others being state roads? I think that Dan and Stu confirmed this for us last time we were talking about it. And town roads, unless otherwise posted, are 30, are 30 miles an hour, right?
Yes.
Yep. Are, are there roads over 35 that are town roads? So there's your answer, Jean.
There you go.
Thank you.
East Road is, is a state road?
No, East Road is, is, it's a collector, it's a collector's street per se, but I don't think it's posted above 35.
It's at 35.
It is?
It is.
They were going to raise it to 40, and we voted it down.
That was a consideration put before the board, the board rejected it.
Okay, all right. That's an easy answer.
Right.
Okay, can I, do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, because I can let everybody ask a question and then come back.
Well, does anyone else have a question on step one, since we're on step one? Yes, Nancy?
Step one, send the concerns to the communications coordinator or planning director.
Yeah.
Who's the planning director?
Dan Monks.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't tied to the planning commission. Okay.
Okay, any other questions on step one? All right, Jean?
Okay, step three. The, the language on line 25, the petition must be signed by at least two-thirds, blah, 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 blah. The word, but then when you get to the bottom, it says, the town may still move forward at its sole discretion. So the word must is sort of not really a must. Is there another word, like the petition, every effort should be made to get a third? No? Okay, I'm a pick, really picky about stuff like that.
Well, so, because it's, yeah, you want to talk about the thinking behind that?
So if, if they fail to get the two-thirds, and that means it won't move forward unless the town staff thinks, oh geez, even though two-thirds of people haven't decided that this is in their best interest, we're still going to look at it because we have data that shows it really is.
No, I understand that, it's just, you don't actually have to reach that threshold for it to still happen.
But if you do, even if, even if staff doesn't think it's so important that it can't, that it needs to move forward regardless, then it, and it will.
Okay, I still think it doesn't make sense, but whatever.
It's, Jean, it's just we have to reserve our rights to do traffic calming, even if the, that's what the community doesn't.
I totally agree, it's just that, that.
You can't give that right up.
It's not, it's not an absolute requirement.
Well, I think though it is to kick in the rest of the stuff.
It is a, it is a requirement to follow.
Okay, okay, let's just move on, never mind.
Anything else on step three for anyone? Okay.
Can I just help Jean with step three? I understand what you're talking about, and I think I can explain it better. Flip it around and understand that if a neighborhood did not get the number of signatures and the town didn't find an egregious safety issue, the, the traffic calming may not be pursued, and the, and the community can't ask for it to be pursued. I think that's what the town protection is here, that we're not giving up.
Yep.
We don't want to spend a lot of time and effort on a project that the community doesn't want to do unless there's a severe safety issue that we need to address.
Okay, I'll keep my mouth shut.
No, do you have any other, anything on step four then? Or anyone else want to, anyone else have questions? You could have questions on step two as well, I guess. Or the, or the purpose? Anything else? We've got Mark here, who is the expert on this. So Mark, I know you gave us several other example policies, and thank you, that was really helpful, and this one is much clearer than those, so again, thank you. Are there, so the, the activity, the activity generators, I guess, the way this is framed, I guess, everything's equal unless it's a, if it's in a school zone. Is that, well, I guess, except for public park, but sidewalks, pedestrians, and mid-block crossing, those are all, it seems, in your, in your, in your experience, it makes sense to have those all be equal? I'm just, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a little, I don't really have a good sense of how the, the numbers should work on the, on, on the chart about, you know, activity generators, crashes, daily traffic.
Yep.
Is there, if we change the numbers, would it sort of give people on roads that, where people tend to speed and there are no sidewalks, like, you know, more of a chance to get remedies on their, on their road, or?
Well, I think the activity generators, for the exception of school zone, aren't worth lots of points, but there were some points.
Yeah.
You know, the, in terms of ranking projects, the, the big scoring is with the actual speeding, especially for roads that, especially with roads where 10% of the vehicles exceed the speed limit by 10 plus miles per hour. You get a lot of points for that, and then one point for every 1% over that, so I think that really weights it towards roads that really do have a significant speeding problem.
Okay.
But I also think we need to recognize that, you know, areas where, that are school zones or where there are a lot of pedestrians present, like near grocery stores, parks, that, that should also count.
Okay, okay, that, that helps me sort of understand the numbers.
Me too.
Other questions from the board before we open it up to the public? Okay, public, yes, Jackie, please.
Jaclyn Matts, Bennington, resident of Bennington, Vermont. Maybe I've missed this in your prior discussions, but I'm curious if the, some of these traffic calming measures, speed tables and such, if they impact emergency vehicles that have a potentially good reason to be exceeding the speed limit?
It's a good question, and that's always a concern with traffic calming projects. You know, I wouldn't recommend putting them on primary emergency response routes, and some of the designs work better with emergency vehicles. For example, speed tables work better with emergency vehicles. And there are designs for speed tables that can be used on emergency, primary emergency response routes, where there's a, there's a, basically a gap for the wheelbase of a very large vehicle, like a fire truck or a, or a ambulance. So the devil's really in the design details to make that compatible with, with emergency vehicles, but where it's not a primary emergency response route, it's not as much of an issue.
Okay, so that would be like evaluated on a per-project basis?
Yeah, yeah, per-project, that's right.
Great.
Yeah, very good question.
Other questions from the community? Can I ask, were we going to try and put something, I think Jean mentioned this last time, that Dan, Dan had, had, I think between Jean and Dan, you guys had talked about trying simpler, less expensive remedies first, and then, so not necessarily going in for a, an expensive speed table every single, as a first step, every single time? I don't remember seeing that referenced in here. Does it make sense to have it in a, in a policy, or is that just mucking up the, the clean nature of what you've written?
Yeah, oh, you're asking my opinion about that?
Yeah, I'm asking your opinion.
I guess I would look at it on a per-project basis. I wouldn't put it in the policy, that's just my opinion, but, you know, felt more comfortable doing that. Some of those, you know, radar speedback signs are effective over the short term, definitely, but research shows that the effect does fade over time, so if there is an area with a really serious issue, you know, I'd hate to lose three years to an approach that doesn't really work. But, and some places it may, you know, may be appropriate, so that's why I think, it's like, we're not making widgets, I know it's, it's hard to get it all into a policy, but...
Yeah, maybe, so I'm just thinking maybe there could be that kind of disclaimer on, if you fill out the application, so on, because it sounds like, you know, there will be a petition that people need to, that people need to do. I'm just thinking that maybe there's somewhere in this process, it could just be noted that, that filling this out doesn't automatically get you a speed table, or, I don't, that will look at a variety of, of things, I don't know, or maybe I'm just, you know, overthinking this.
I think that makes good sense.
Okay.
With the right to revisit, because to Mark's point, some of that, some of those initial less expensive methods may not hold their effectiveness over a long period of time.
Okay, so do we, yeah, Nancy, just one?
So can I ask, want to add one more thing? I was talking to a planner in Rutland, and one of the ways that these projects fail is you really have to get it right. You know, if they're not aggressive enough, people lose patience with it, and they say, oh, traffic calming doesn't work. And if you get it too aggressive, nobody likes it, so it's really tricky. That's why I worry about doing a one-size-fits-all for each project. That's sort of what I was trying to say.
Under the priority ranking process, why does the planning commission need to be involved? Can it just be handled in the policy with the town, the VCRC, and then the decisions go from there?
So Nancy, that's really up to you folks, if you want to have a, a citizen committee be involved in the final ranking. It could be that just staff and VCRC does that. I think Mark has seen in other communities where there's at least one kind of citizen oversight group that, that reviews those, those rankings of staff and professionals, but I don't have a strong feeling on, on that particular topic. That's really up to you folks, if you want that to be part of the process, or if you just want staff and VCRC to rank them, and then they come to you every year for your review and determination about whether or not you want to fund them. But that's really, it's, it's the select board's policy, and you guys can really do whatever you feel is appropriate for this ranking process.
What would the downside be to having the planning commission head this up for us?
Well, obviously Dan's going to be involved as town staff, I just think it's adding another step, having to take it in front of another group where we already have so many people involved, I'm just trying to move it along a little bit.
Who would do it if, if the planning commission didn't?
Well, you would have the town staff, you'd have the VCRC, you're going to have the police department involved, you'll have all the information from the public.
So really what they're doing, though, is keeping, I mean, so the beauty of, of this being so clean is that the petition comes in, we get the crash data, we get the speed data, we get, you know, pedestrian, the, you know, how many pedestrian bicycle trips there are, whether there's sidewalks, and they get a score. So somebody has to, somebody has to do the math, it's not high math, but someone has to do the math, and someone has to maintain that data, and as new projects come in, that, you know, a project that was highly ranked might, you know, might drop in rank or stay at, you know, highest rank. It's sort of like, why would, why would, one, I think staff are super, super, super busy, and we already have a committee to do it. I would hate, I mean, I, I personally would not want to form another committee to do this, because it's, it's fairly minor work, because the, all the, all the data's coming from VCRC and the police department. But they aren't having to spend the time to sit down and add up the numbers and, you know, keep it in a, itself.
I think that's the point, the data, the, the input from the, from the other bodies that you just mentioned, Nancy, is really just pulling data that's already available. So the planning commission will be responsible for, with, with the help of those other groups, but, but it has to land on someone's desk, and I, I think this model is that it lands on the desk of the planning commission.
It also feels like the planning commission would want to know where we have those kinds of issues, because they are in charge of looking at how the town grows and making sure that we're doing, we're, you know, we're taking the right measures that, that we need to.
Yeah, I don't, it seems like planning commission is an ideal group to do it.
So just to, just to, I just want to clarify kind of process, just so folks kind of understand, at least in this policy, the role of the planning commission as, as, in, in this process. Really, the data collection, the initial ranking, all that's going to happen in-house with staff, VCRC, and other folks. And it's really just a kind of, the planning commission is really there to, as a citizen body, to say, hey,
body, to say, hey, is the staff, does the staff, is the staff getting this right? Or are there things they're missing that maybe they have blinders on or something? And it's really, it's, it's a step where you have a citizen body review the work of staff and professionals to kind of just do a, you know, almost like a gut check, hey, you know, that seems like, even though you've, looks like you ranked this and no, no, there was no intention to maybe have some bias, you know, maybe you should have, this one really does need to get a little bit higher, a little bit lower. So that's really the planning commission's role, and then they're the ones that will finalize it, and then it comes to you folks every year for your review. So that step is not essential to the process, but in many places, there is that kind of citizen board that has some expertise in, in this area that will review staff recommendations. So...
I think that makes good sense, the way you've described it, because it's an existing citizen board that likely has a, a similar expertise. Yeah.
Absolutely. But I just don't want to give the impression that it has to be in there. This is your policy. You folks tell us how you want us to operate it.
Yeah, if it's not in there, then it's sort of, I mean, it, they do have expertise, and I think that's, that's sort of the piece, because select board really is designed to be looking at, at the higher level policy issues rather. And so you're gonna bring, so at the end of the year, what would happen is that you will bring, uh, a list of, here are the community, here are the neighborhoods that are interested in traffic calming. We've done this data, we've, we've pulled these pieces of data, here's how they're ranked, and here's what we think might be appropriate for the kinds of things they need, and then we'll decide how much money we want to allocate to it, or, you know, if we have any money to allocate to it. And, and I think as maybe Jean, you said last time, if the, the thing that needs the most money is not something we can afford at this time, then it might get skipped over for a year, and the second priority might...
And just, you know, we, we envision this being kind of updated regularly, not just once a year, boom, here it is. It's, as, as we rank them, as, as these projects come in, they'll be posted on the website, folks can see where their project ranks, at least in a snapshot in time. And then when you folks budget in, in the fall of the year, beginning in the fall of the year, then that's, that's when we'll provide a report to, to review and, and you guys will give staff direction about, we will, we'll want you to fund these projects, or, you know, we're not gonna do projects this year, whatever, whatever the board's decision is. So, but I do want, I do want folks to know, this is not just something that happens once a year that we put on your desks. It's a, it's a, it will continue throughout the year as we get projects.
Okay.
So the board won't have a say unless a citizen comes and appeals to us directly?
No.
So you'll have, you'll have the ultimate final say, because you hold the purse string. So either...
Okay, so if we want to switch roads at the end, we can do that?
Absolutely.
We could say, yeah, we can't afford 100,000 to do what needs to be done here.
No, but if, if two roads come in front of us, and it would seem that one of the roads, the road should get switched, do we have that final say, or is it a done deal when it gets to us?
Yeah, no, so we could say, they've ranked them, here's, you know, here's the, here's the road that seems, you know, that comes out with these numbers to be the highest, but we would rather, you know, what we can do this year is what the second road needs. So yes, so the answer to your question is yes, but it's really tied to purse strings, because when you do the ranking, you know, unless they, unless someone comes in and says, I think you did the numbers wrong, when I add them up, they're a different number, or, you know, we actually get, our traffic is higher than you think it is, uh, and, you know, please recheck that, or something like that. The, this takes the, you know, I like the people on X Street better than the people on Y Street.
It takes that personal anything out of it, and we've, it's, it's pure hard data. We can challenge data, we can challenge data sources, and we can challenge the accuracy of it, but once we're sure that we have good data, it takes all the personal out of it. And I, I think that's smart.
I think it's necessary. Yeah, absolutely necessary.
Would it be true if, if, let's just say, the, the streets that get the highest number, this could be driven by that, or it could be driven by what gets approved, I mean, the amount of money we have to spend? So it, it might, it's gonna be a balancing act. And we, we may not be able to do the worst project, like you just said, or the worst number, the worst street.
The highest ranking.
If it's the highest cost, which is really unfortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need to be really thinking about that when we're developing the line item in the budget.
What a great, great segue to the next agenda item. So, um, so do we want to, so are we comfortable with what is here right now as a first reading?
Knowing that we're gonna be reading it at the next meeting.
I still don't like the language on that item, but...
Well, I mean, so what I would suggest is that for the public and for the select board, any, if you have, if you have thoughts about any of this, we want, we want to hear from you. So if it's select board, I'm thinking...
Yeah, Jean, we can, we can...
Yeah.
It just needs to be written differently. I, I want the town to be able to step in and do it regardless if the signatures are there or not. I want that to happen. It just doesn't, it doesn't explicitly explain that in that language.
We can word smith with you, just...
So you can do that, and then, and then as we've noted before, if you want the select board and the town staff to be able to see, to, um, see your comments, then you want to submit them through the comment link on the website. And it is on, it, when you go to the town website, you'll, you'll see it on the left-hand side, I believe. Yeah. Um, and so if you have any comments on this before the next meeting, which will be November 11, uh, please, please send those comments in, and the same for us. And the sooner, obviously, we can get those comments to staff, the sooner they can act on it. All right, so any final thoughts on the policy before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay. All right. So, all right, so with Jean's great segue, the next one is traffic calming, thinking about the fiscal year 2026 budget. We, uh, we are going to need some guidance in terms of how we start, uh, putting money aside for traffic calming. So our first traffic calming, bigger projects would be in the next fiscal year, which would start in July.
2025.
Yeah, 2020, of July 2025.
Yes.
Which is fiscal year 2026. Hello. So, guys, discussion, do, how do, uh, you know, we have a bunch of data that we were given last time, um, and so what are your, what are your thoughts? I can, I can go down the road, uh, road, I can go down the row and, and just ask you to share what you're thinking about, how we do this, or if you think it's a terrible idea and we shouldn't be putting any money aside. Um, I don't know.
And Jeanie, just to clarify, we're not looking for a final direction this evening, and we just, this is really meant for the board to discuss amongst themselves, whether they think it's even something they want to consider, and then I'm sure Stuart would appreciate by the end, by the next meeting or the meeting after, direction and what, what sort of budget we should be putting into the proposal to you.
And I think if you guys have, um, before, you know, we, we sort of say, not sure how we do this, um, if you guys have any thoughts of, you know, what's, what's a good contingency? Is $15,000, you know, added to the budget for traffic calming, uh, that might or might not, you know, start next year? So this is for next year, which would be July 2025 through July 2026 is what we're talking about. So, you know, do you have, do you have any ballpark figures of even what we should be thinking about, or how we should be thinking about it?
It's a, it's a really good question. I think the first project will probably be the most expensive, because we're learning how to do this. Um, I guess the number I was thinking of was 25.
Oh, okay. All right.
To really do a project.
Okay.
Um, but obviously 15, you could do, probably do a lot, so...
Yeah, just to put it in perspective, I mean, one of the, just one of the feedback, you know, signs, radar feedback signs is $3,000 to $4,000. Just one speed table, you know, anywhere from 6,000 to 8,000, um, or even more, because I don't know how old those numbers are, so, and we know that one speed table isn't effective, you have to have multiple. It may be that you're like, well, we're not gonna do speed tables this upcoming year, we're gonna work, focus on, on, you know, radar feedback signs, we're gonna focus on lines, striping, we're gonna focus on signs. So if you're gonna do speed tables, and that's a big step, and there's a lot of people who are not yet sold on that, including folks on my staff, on our staff. So, I mean, it really is, is how big does the board want to go in that first year? And, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna follow your lead. We've given you, we think the information you need, uh, to make a decision about whether or not you want to proceed, uh, and we can certainly follow up with more information about cost, et cetera, of, of a possible project. But I think Mark is right. 15 will do a pretty minor project, and 25, we could really show, show what, you know, what a true traffic calming section would look like.
Okay.
So it's really your decision as a board.
All right. So I, I think I probably am gonna put people on the spot on the board, but I also just want to say, for the community, this is another place where it's helpful for, for you to give input. Um, you know, we came up, we came up with this idea because so many neighborhoods came to us with speeding concerns, and so, you know, so we are trying, so we are trying to address it. So I'm just gonna, Jean, you've been talking a lot. Clark, I'm gonna start with you and come this way, because this is the quiet part. Yeah. Um, just, you know, do you have any thoughts about how you want to approach it, whether you think it, we should be looking at the, and, you know, adding this to the budget? Where you are on it?
Well, I, I look at it as like a child. Crawl, walk, yeah. Crawl, walk, run. So, we're gonna approach this problem by identifying where problems are, and what do we need to do at each location? As been said, one size is not fit all. Consequently, I like the idea of crawl, walk, run. We can put up a sign or some sort of indicator that slows people down, why we need to put a table in there. And again, we're not talking about something we're gonna fix in six months, we're talking about a long-term project. I think we need to get this data, it sounds like we're doing, and then with that data, we need to come up with incremental responsibility. So again, I like the idea of crawl, walk, run as we approach this problem.
So you're more on the 15,000? Because that's, that's like two radar, that's two radar speed things and a couple signs. Yeah, yeah.
Signs that slow them down, why do we do that?
So are you, are, so just, just to be clear then, are you saying that you don't want to adjust the budget?
I'm saying that we, we need to have in the budget flexibility, but I'm not saying we need to set 25, 30,000 dollars aside, went on, said we discovered, maybe we can address this problem by spending 10,000.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, thank you. Tom, what's your thought?
Actually, I was, I was kind of working alongside what, what Clark was saying. One thing that struck me, Dan, a few minutes ago, you said you weren't sure how old the numbers were in terms of what some of these things might cost.
Well, we know with the speed, the radar feedback signs, we have current numbers.
Right, that we know, but like speed tables and stuff.
And I don't know, Mark, do you know how old the speed table and speed hump numbers are?
2023.
So 2023. So they're not terribly out of date.
Okay. Because if we're gonna be looking at these numbers, we need to have as, as close to the right amount as possible, because we don't want to spend any more than necessary and put that burden on the taxpayers. So that's, that's one thing I'd be looking for, probably, is to see how, as up to date as possible. Things have gotten more expensive in the past few years, and the economy's been kind of a mess, um, in terms of inflation and so forth. So if we're, if we're off by thousands and thousands of dollars, then the project's gonna get screwed up.
I don't think we're gonna be off by thousands and thousands, but, you know, it might be 8,000 instead of 6,000 or something like that. So, yeah, for, so it could impact, absolutely, yes.
We just want to make sure we budget, if we're gonna budget for something, we have to make sure we budget it enough.
So if the board is very interested in doing a pilot project, we'll certainly work on getting more up-to-date current.
Right.
But we're, we're pretty close, I have to say. 2023, I thought it was a little older. That's actually pretty good information.
Okay, yeah, I just, when you said that, I immediately, a bell went off. And, uh, when you said older, I was thinking older than 2023. But, um, but yeah, I mean, this, if we're gonna budget something for this year, clearly we're not gonna be able to go through the process as is laid out in the policy, so this would all be on us deciding which project we're gonna go forward with.
No, no, I think this would, no, so this would be, well, this will go in the budget that'll start in July, and so what we're trying to do is start to build a small fund.
So build, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, right, because if anything got built, it would not be until next, next budget season. So we're, we're really, and I think in the end, Stu is the one that's gonna come back with it, with, with something to us, but I think it's helpful for him to hear our thinking, uh, because once we put some money in, what is likely is that, that will be the traffic calming sort of amount that, that we start building a fund to do something with.
Okay.
But yeah, by the time people get their petitions and we get all the data, you know, this, this is sort of, this is a pilot year, and there may be some simple measures we can take this year, you know, street signs, reflectors, you know, that sort of stuff. And, uh, as we really start looking at some of these bigger problem streets that have been identified by the community. Sarah? Let me skip you from it.
Yeah, I didn't. Okay, so thank you for the presentation again, and thanks for going over this. I, this isn't all for naught, so yes, I want to see this as a line item. I don't know how much, because this is new to me. This is something that we're looking at, safety. So I would look, again, towards assistant town manager, town manager, towards what is reasonable, towards the line item. I, I don't know, this is not my specialty, so, yeah.
So I guess the, um, are you, are you thinking you want to put together, I think sort of the, the span that we've been given is we could do, we could put in some money and do some small things, or do we want, I think when we started this, we were talking about, well, we could do one or two pilot projects, uh, you know, that was the, the first conversation that was had. Are you thinking we should put in, you know, should we try and do a pilot project next fall? Or should we, are we, are we doing the walk, you know, the crawl to walk, to, to run?
Oh, like I said, I would look towards the town manager and assistant town manager for their advisement on this.
He's looking to us for this advice. That's why we're having this conversation.
I, I think I would, I want to go through some emails and, and ask questions, more than just say, hey, you know, this is one I want to do right now.
Well, yeah, that is why I've been doing this.
I don't want to spitball something right now.
For two months, yes. Okay. Nancy?
There are so many roads right now. We could all agree on 10 roads, we needed to do this. I think we have to do the crawl. I think we have to start smaller and try to impact more roads.
That's not what that means. If we start smaller, we won't impact more roads.
I'm talking, I'm talking trying these signs.
Okay.
So we can impact more roads and, and see how that goes. As far as budget, you know, what can we cut from the existing budget to add this in?
We can't. That is why we're having this conversation. This conversation is about, do we want, do, does this select board want to listen to the communities that have been coming for the last six months? And we have heard from every, we have heard from downtown roads, we have heard, and some from, from, from us as well, as well as East Road, South, South Street, South Stream Road, Beach Street. I mean, we've heard from the, the whole town, basically. So we are, um, so what we're trying to decide is whether we are gonna start a fund, either start as small or start it larger, but it is for the purpose of traffic calming, and it will, it is not something we've done in the past. We have not bought more radar units. We have not thought about putting in speed humps or steams. more radar units. We have not thought about putting in speed humps or speed, speed tables. That's why we've all been getting ourselves educated for the last couple of months. So I think it is not, this is not a rob Peter to pay Paul. This is a, this is, are we committing to putting a, you know, a small amount of money toward really making an effort to, to do traffic calming in this community? And if we're not, then I think it's not clear what, you know, it's not clear what we've been, what we've been talking about. But, so that is it, Nancy. It's not, from the very beginning, the discussion here has been, do we want to put money toward traffic calming?
First, budgets can always be cut. Ask practically everybody in this town, have you had to cut back on your spending? I think that needs to be something the board has to be willing to look at. And to me, it's obviously, we, we need to do something. You know, I would like to be able to tell people, we're going to have something on six or seven roads next summer. And to me, that
Can I take a different approach here?
Yeah. So, okay. So I, so I have where you are.
We've got, and this is discussion. So this is all good. This is all good. The right way to budget is to look at a wish list, budget it out, figure out what it's going to cost, prioritize, and go from there. This is probably a heavy lift, but we have heard from how many communities so far about speeding in their neighborhood. What's wrong with asking our experts to take those handful of projects through the process? That, that would be a great test of this. Cost them out for us as best you can. And bring that $100,000 wish list to this board. We look at the priorities and we whittle it down. Because we probably are going to agree that 100,000 is unrealistic the first year.
Is that something that's possible?
No.
Can you look at the?
It's not possible. If you want us to do it by the policy.
Yeah.
We're talking about people submitting formally.
Except that, I understand that.
Then they have to do the petition. We have to hire a professional, at least for the first couple, to help us design it. So it is not feasible for us to give you a list of fully vetted projects with real construction numbers next to them.
What I will say
It is not going to happen in the period of time that you guys have to make a decision regarding budgeting. This is really a discussion about whether you want to jumpstart this process. Do you want to show a commitment to this process moving forward? I mean, I don't have strong opinions either way on this, but I will say, don't adopt a policy unless you think you're going to fund it. Because it just
I wasn't suggesting that.
It will disappoint people. And I'm not saying that you are, Ed. I'm just saying, I know there's a lot of discussion about this, but I think the policy and the funding go hand in hand. If you're going to adopt a policy, you have to find a way to fund it. Or you just say, you know what, we're just going to do the best we can to put up signs. And maybe we'll put $10,000 in for some radar feedback signs, and we'll see how that works. I think Mark's been pretty clear. Those measures may help in the short term. They're not going to help in the long term for, for true speeding problems. And like I said, I'm not advocating one way or another for this policy or for this funding. But if you're going to do it, you got to do both. Fund it and do the policy.
I'm having a hard time, and I think the rest of my colleagues are, coming up with a number to, I mean, we're talking about jumpstarting. I understand that. So my thinking on it was that we would take the projects that people have already brought to us and assume that they've, that we've not adopted a policy, but it's a test. Assume that they have been through the petition part of the process. I don't know how you budget for something when you don't know what it's going to cost. And the things that we can do that we could squeeze into a budget are things that Mark has suggested are short-term solutions with, with their efficacy of all, you know, evaporating over time.
So Mark, I know we have to do some work, but Mark, you, I think you said that $25,000 could do a good pilot project.
I believe so.
Yeah. So we would obviously want to
But is that one project to Nancy's point?
It's one project.
I'm sorry.
It's one project.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's
So the plan here, though, is that this is not a one-off. We're not adopting a policy because it's a one-off. And I do think that, you know, we have, they've given us a lot of information about what it costs. We don't know how much it costs to design, you know, speed table or, or any of this. But we do have, we do have costs on asphalt. We do have costs on, on radar signs and those sorts of things. So again, this is just a discussion. We're not trying to make any decisions tonight. But I think it's helpful. And I think, you know, Stu, I think we are going to look to you to say, you know, you're looking at what the budget looks like. I think you're hearing from us that we're, we wish we could do a lot, and we're very fearful that we won't be able to do a lot. So how do we, how do we get this going? How do we jumpstart it and not break the bank? And that's, you know, I think that's for us to think about. And I think that's probably, Stu, we need guidance from you, too.
However, however you decide to move forward, and I, I tend to be on the Clark and Nancy position here of starting small and looking at projects that are easy to install and have an, an impact. But however you do it, you should establish it as a reserve. So that if the money is not spent in that given year, it is reserved for future years.
Yep.
And it doesn't just roll into the fund balance and disappear.
Okay.
So my next point on this whole thing about funding something that is sort of an unknown is related to unspent funds. Is there a way that this board can authorize the, the spending of unspent funds? For example, we have an open, unfortunate, open position on the police force. That money, and that there's a three-month gap. Next October, there will have been three months of savings from an unfilled police officer position. Can that money be diverted to be spent on traffic calming, which would be public safety? So in its earmark to begin with, it seems appropriate to me.
The answer is no. Because the highway fund is, is, is paid for by a different group of taxpayers than the police department, which is in the general fund.
Got it. I got it.
We have to allocate those funds out of the highway fund if, in fact, they are going to impact.
So my example was a bad one. Is there a position that might be open by next October 1st that has funding that could be diverted? You get my point.
Yeah, I do. And, and, and there may be, there may, in fact, if we establish a small reserve, and we get towards year end, and we've got a project or two that we think are important, we might be able to find the funding in the monies that are unspent on other projects because of other savings that have happened. But however you do it, you need to start with a reserve that is identified so that we know that there is money available should we need to move forward.
So Jeanie, to answer the question that you initially posed, I would be in favor of earmarking $25,000 for the first fiscal year because that's what the expert, Mark Anders, told us to earmark.
Okay. All right. So I think I just wanted a sense of the board where we were. And I do want to give the community an opportunity to speak as well. So any last thoughts from us?
Mr. Woods brought up something that I've been kicking around the back of my mind. Again, one of those simple things. Under the proposal, X number of vacant police officer positions that are funded, reprogramming that money to overtime within the PD for traffic enforcement is, again, one of our measures. If we've got five vacant positions, that seems like a lot of money that could be put into the pockets of our officers to do traffic enforcement as additional duties.
Can I ask, don't, don't we have a grant that pays for traffic enforcement out of a separate?
Yeah, there's, there's what's called a highway traffic enforcement grant that we utilize when we do major traffic enforcement throughout the community. But our officers are out there, working 12-hour shifts. They're doing traffic enforcement all the time. Overtime, and I'm talking off the top of my head, is generally running anywhere from as little as 4% on a given week to up to around 13% or 14% in a given week. So Clark, to answer your question, those funds are being utilized when necessary to provide overtime.
Right. We used to get a report. Do we stop asking for that report?
Yes, you did. You told me you didn't need it anymore.
Never mind. Okay. I'm going to close my mouth. Okay.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yeah.
Can you tell us where in a 20-mile radius there's a speed table? I've never driven over one.
That is a great question. I've done a lot of research about speed tables nearby. And I actually put it out to all my, my counterparts throughout the state. And the, the best example I got was Hanover, New Hampshire. And I happen to be, I happened to be driving through Hanover last week. So I checked it out. So I was very impressed with the project.
That's the closest one?
That's the closest one I've found.
Darn. So I will say that, and I had sent an article to Dan, in Boston, the mayor there has committed to putting traffic tables on every pedestrian street in the inner Boston area, which is a heck of a lot of traffic tables. But, well, apparently, they're well on their way. There are, so if you're ever in Boston, apparently, there are a lot of traffic tables here, too.
I would dispense with the traffic and just keep Bennington as it is. We don't want to Bostonize this town.
Yeah. If it didn't cost, cost, if it didn't cost so much, it would be cool to do, like, just create one somewhere. We could go practice and see how it felt. That would cost as much, that would cost as much as doing a real one in a real street.
$8,000.
That makes no sense at all. But wouldn't that be great?
So when I was in Hanover, I tried to drive over the speed table at 40 miles an hour. And I couldn't do it.
Why? What do you mean?
He would have been airborne.
I would have been airborne.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I was, about 25 was about the comfortable limit.
So they were wondering who this guy was that went over the table at five miles, 10 miles?
I was wondering about that. He was driving back and forth. Yeah. And then I rode my bike back and forth to see what was for bikes. And so it was, it was fun.
You're a dedicated public servant. All right. All right. So, okay. So we have it, we have a sense of where we are, which is sort of a broad, yeah, broad spectrum. Let's open it up to the public. Jim, please.
Thank you, Jim. Carol Blenning. What initiated this idea of implementing these?
We, we've gotten emails over the years. I think what actually kickstarted it was a proposal to increase the speed limit on East Road from 35 to 40. And the community came out and said, we walk and bike on that road all the time. People speed at 50 miles an hour. It's not safe. There are no sidewalks. And then, and then people really did start coming out and sending us emails and coming to public comment. So it sort of snowballed. And by the end of it, I think we literally have heard from almost every community, every neighborhood.
Yeah, I remember while I was on the board. And I still, a couple weeks ago, had a complaint about Morgan Street.
It's come out, Morgan was.
At any rate, have there been any accidents with respect to these complaints, any associated? There has.
There have. And we actually, in the select board packet last time, we received like the top 10 roads, streets and roads that have had crashes and whether they've had, who, you know, whether it was the vehicle hurt.
V or?
Yeah, property or a person hurt. No fatalities, luckily. It also looked at, oh my gosh. It looked at, it looked at speed. It looked at casual, yeah. Go for it, Mark.
Sure. Yeah, there were kind of two categories. One was the state high crash location map. So we highlighted all the parts of Bennington that the state has identified as high crash locations. But that, that data only goes up to 2016. So we also looked at data to the present. So we included that in the map, too.
And so the crash data, so Hudson Lane had, had the highest crash, number of crashes. Then Monument Avenue, Gore Road, North Street, Rice Lane, Safford, Main, North, North Side Drive, and another part of Main Street. So those are the high crash areas. And then you also
Yeah, there's a little bit of a, you know, if you, if you just looked at crashes, a map of crashes, you would just map traffic volume. So what the state does is they look at traffic volume and crash rate to try to find places that have above-average crashes. So that's how they do it. And they also weigh, they look at it through an economic lens. So, you know, property damage crashes are cost so much, and injury crashes cost so much, and fatalities cross so much, cost so much. So it's sort of like a cost benefit. That's what they're, that's what they're using the data for. They use that to inform big safety projects.
Okay. They, and we also got speeding data, the top, it's sort of, it's the same streets, but in a slightly different order. South Stream Road, Monument Avenue, North Branch, Park East, Silk Road, West Road, Hunt Street by the Tasty Freeze, Benmont, Chapel Road, Burgess Road. So it's sort of, we've covered everybody.
You said that these traffic slowing, what are they called again?
Calming.
Calming.
Traffic calming, yeah.
They, they work only temporarily?
No, the, well, the radar feedback signs, you know, those are the signs that you drive by and it says, this is the speed limit. This is your speed, kind of slow down. You know, those are very effective, but the studies show that they tend to, the effect tends to diminish over time when people realize that there's no real penalty for making the thing flash. Unless it's really paired with enforcement, the effect fades. But speed humps and speed cables make it physically impossible to speed. So those, the effect does not fade with those. They, they last.
Well, speaking purely for myself, I'm waiting back and forth to Montpelier. I named two spots right off the top of my head, going into, in and out of East Dorset and in Wallingford. And it's always there in my mind ahead of time. And it, it has an effect on me. So it works for me.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else from the community? Yes, Jackie?
Jackie Matts, Bennington. All right. Hearing the talk of budgets and how that rolls into all of this, I've noticed when I drive around during the summer at a reasonable speed, there's often, in the summer, a lot of other kinds of road maintenance projects, the road being dug up, sort of sewer maintenance, things like that. Is there a potential that wrapping in the, the speed, the traffic calming measures with other road maintenance could help offset the cost? Or is that wishful thinking?
Yeah, and, oh, yeah.
I think, Jackie, it's an interesting approach, but I think it would really depend on the project and what we're ultimately doing. Many of our projects, we're looking at road rebuilds to create better sidewalks or better drainage. Yes, if you were doing a project like that, where you were tearing up the surface of the road, and you knew that a speed table would work there, it would be perfect. But oftentimes, we're forced into a situation where we're digging up the road, and we hadn't planned to do it, but because of emergency situation, we've got to move on it. So it wouldn't work at all times. It might work sometimes.
So maybe there is a benefit to evaluating all of the roads and understanding what needs to happen there so that when those opportunities present themselves, you can take advantage of them.
That's a really excellent point. And that might be a reason that a priority one might not get done, but a priority three or four might, because that road's being torn up anyway. Yeah.
That's a good reminder for us to look. Thank you.
That's, yeah. So that would be a cross-reference. Yeah.
Mark, would you have any idea for those radar, when you drive up, it shows you how fast you're going. Are they good for three or four years? You said they lose their effectiveness. Do you know how long?
I only say they lose their effectiveness just based on the, the IT report, the Institute of Transportation Engineers report that has looked at a bunch of different projects and the effect over time. And they noted that, that as people, you know, as people drive by every day, and there's no real penalty for making the thing flash, they tend to start ignoring it after maybe a year or two. They didn't specify exactly how long.
Okay.
But, you know, it probably always helps, but I think you won't see a dramatic impact.
Do we know whether in Shaftesbury, which I think is always, that one always reminds me to slow down.
Yeah.
Do you, do you know if there is any data from Shaftesbury about whether that, that flashing light still slows down traffic?
I don't. Yeah, I don't. I'm not, I can check with them. Yeah.
I mean, I also wonder if it's where, yeah, where it's placed. I mean, I don't know if there's any, if there's any psychology to where, where you might be, oh, shoot, I am going too fast.
I think that's a good point. We've talked about the one in Manchester. I've mentioned it a couple of times, where it's right at the junction of Barnumville Road, and it's at a, right at or near a crosswalk. But it tells you in the holiday season that you're being naughty or nice in red or green. And I, I look for it. I look at my speed before I get to it. So I wonder if it's, plus, I think that we're always going to be slowing down tourists and people that are not familiar with the area. The complacency is really those of us that are local that get used to seeing a sign. So we're getting some of the problem more longer term than we're really talking about with those signs.
Yeah, I think the radar feedback signs work best with unintentional speeders, people who just aren't paying that much attention, that people who don't intend to speed. It probably doesn't work as well with extreme speeders, people who really just don't care, and they're just going to drive through at 50 miles an hour.
They need the table.
Yeah. Table works better for them. Yeah. Table works better for them.
Gee.
The speed calming technique that intrigues me the most is not painting double yellow lines. I happen to, really, I don't like the double yellow lines, except when they are obviously necessary, like on Route 7 South. But we could just stop painting double yellow lines on dead ends and, you know, neighborhood streets. I thought that was fascinating, that removing the yellow line slows traffic down. That's something that would cost nothing. It would save us money, so we don't have to paint double yellow lines on streets that clearly don't need them, and where it may actually slow traffic down.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, one thing you could do that wouldn't cost money is every time you repave a road, look at what the lane width really needs to be, and just do the minimum, and don't paint double yellow lines if you don't have to. That wouldn't cost anything.
Okay.
And bring your curbs in.
I also want, other comments from the community, because we're, we are behind schedule. I want to hear anyone, anyone out here has thought, wants to share? I know, I saw your hand earlier. That's why I was like.
We know you do.
Just a thought on Shirley Adams, Bennington. Nancy's comments about budget and everybody being very sensitive to the budget. And if we add additional funding for this new program, is there some way when we put it on the ballot, or we highlight it during the budget talks, which not all that many people participate in, but if it's on the bud, on the ballot, it's just kind of a note or something that, you know, this much went up because we instituted a new program, and a little explanation. I don't know if that's possible, but just a thought.
Actually, it's, I mean, one of the things that we instituted last year as suggestion of staff during the town manager review process was to have an information sheet at the, at the window where you pay your taxes, and to also put that on the website that just sort of, that gave an explanation for, you know, the budget went up 3%, X percent of that was because of medical, you know, because of health insurance, you know. So it, so it could certainly be part of that explanation. I mean, in terms of $25,000 is a, is a lot of money, yeah, is a lot of money for us, but it's a very small part of, of the budget. So I'm not sure it actually would, would be big enough. But I do think noting those kinds of new reserves does make sense.
I would agree with Shirley. That's a very good point, if it could be articulated in some way.
Okay. So, okay, so I think we have a sense of where we are and things to think about, and sort of bug you guys maybe some more if we have thoughts about what is it that we actually would want to do. Okay. So with that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming, Mark. Let's move to the manager's report, and I'm just wondering, I know didn't address Clark's question earlier about town plan, if you can just, just include somewhere.
I, I, I saw Clark's question earlier on the, on the town, one of the town common sites. I, that will take some research to, to understand.
No, he's looking for the, I think he's, he's asking whether, whether we're, we have a current town plan that's approved. I think that was your question, wasn't it, or no?
Well, I was seeking documentation on the adoption and implementation of a town plan. I couldn't find a process showing where that had happened. I saw a lot of things about amendments, but nothing about actual adoption of a new town plan.
All right. So I'm just saying, just on your radar.
Yeah, well, no, I'll, I'll offer this comment, and I attempted to do it at the last meeting. The, the town of Bennington went through the energy update, which was a comprehensive amount of work. That's the work that was done in 2017, 2018. That was then passed on to the Bennington County Regional Commission, who has the authority to approve or accept town plans. They looked at that comprehensive update, and apparently considered it a, an update of the entire town plan, and thereby approved our plan as a new town plan, and extended the deadline. That was done in 2018, extending it to 2026. I believe the town plan is valid as written. It's a decision of, of the Regional Commission. Whether the town was expecting that or hoping to get that, I don't know. But it's been done, and it is as it is. But that's just my opinion.
Okay. Onto the cat adoption.
Yes. The one action that I may have tonight, Franklin Lane partial closure request. The Harvest Brewing is, is planning to do a cat adoption event and fundraiser for the St. Francis of a Sissy Cat Rescue Organization. They're looking to close a portion of the Franklin Lane from South Street to the rear of the building at 201 South Street, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM on Sunday, November 17th. I'm looking for a motion to allow that to happen. I think we should move and accept that. Let's, let's.
You're making a motion?
Let's, let's make the motion to close the street for the cats.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? Not, so hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Yeah, aye, so that.
I also note in here that the board was concerned about meeting on the 23rd of December. So we are officially moving our meeting date, second meeting date in December to December 16th. I wanted to include that and remind the public as well. Nancy asked for some follow-up on the tennis courts because of the reference to the Southshire YMCA. The board at the time, and this goes back to 2015 to 2017, was made up of Gordon Black, Mark Kevorkian, and Tom Husser. They had in their possession $20,000 that they donated to the town. It showed up in our reserves in 2016, 2017, which means it came to us, according to Mark Sawyer, in 2015, to be used to upgrade the tennis courts. A portion of that money was used to do that, to upgrade the tennis courts, and also brought, purchased wind screens. The remaining funds, which turned out to be some, close to $6,000, were carried forward and used this year as part of the project to re-upgrade those tennis courts. So that's, that's the history of the Southshire Y. It goes back a long way. And then the last thing I have, I've looked through the calendar in December for another board listening session. There was some concern about the date we had picked. And unfortunately, that calendar is filling up with various Christmas events, holiday events. And so I'm looking to you to better understand whether you want to try to squeeze something in during that month. We meet twice in January, at least for budget work sessions on Saturdays. I don't know whether you want to try to meet towards the end of that month as well, or do we want to wait until February, which tends to be, the budget is warned, we're in between the budget warning and the town meeting. February might be an easier date to find.
Yeah. Or we could leave it on December 18th, which is where it's scheduled right now.
Yes. I, I look to you for your direction.
Could, could I ask the public if they have any suggestions? Can we ask the, let's ask the board first, and then, okay, because this, yeah. Nancy, you, you brought this up.
Well, I, you know, is anything, I think is really important, especially with the Ben High. We couldn't do it the week before. There's too much going on. If we switched it from a Wednesday to a Tuesday or a Thursday?
The week before has at least, if I remember correctly, at least three meetings scheduled during, during those. Some are in the daytime, but they run late in the day, and some are in the evening. So it, it is difficult, Nancy. I did take a hard look, and the 18th was clear. And even that date is going to be difficult, because there's a meeting that occurs during the day that has to be cleared, and then we come in at 6 o'clock.
So the concern, Nancy, was your concern that people wouldn't be able to come?
When I think about how much we're going to be throwing at the public in January and February, I.
Except we're not giving presentations. So this is a listening session. So this is an opportunity for the public to come in and ask questions. It's not going to be a presentation. So if we don't think the public will come, back to Sarah's point, which we'll get, we'll, we'll ask you guys, those of you who have stayed get to, because you are the faithful. But Nancy, your personal opinion on this, do you want to cancel, or do you want to, to hold it?
I think it's necessary.
Okay.
I mean, we only do it every other month.
That's fine. Sarah?
Yes, is the building even available? And then also, do you even know if Cat TV might be able to televise that?
He's saying, oh.
They would probably record it and not televise it live.
If it was the 16th you're talking about.
I think it was the 18th.
18th.
So yes, Shaftesbury will have priorities, so we will record it, will not be live.
It won't be live, okay.
Shaftesbury Monday, right? We're talking Wednesday?
I think, I think it was the Wednesday.
Ed, what's your, do you?
Wednesday what?
If it's a Wednesday, we might be able to cover.
I think it is a Wednesday, Josh.
No, we are going to have a Monday, December 16th meeting.
After we go through.
Because I think, unless this board wants to meet on the 23rd. I'm happy to meet on the 23rd, but I think it, just given what we've heard, I think the public is less happy to be here on the 23rd. So, so if we're having a meeting the 16th, December 16th, and now we're talking about leaving the listening session on the 18th?
If it's on the 18th, that's my fault. I'm sorry. If it's 18th on a Wednesday, we should be able to do that.
Okay. Perfect. Okay.
Just know that because we are suggesting that we, or we did change the board meeting, the regular board meeting to two weeks in a row in December, that would mean three board meetings in one week, week in, week in two days. And I want to just remind everybody that any discussion regarding Ben High, what can happen during the Ben High-warned meeting, it'll be on an agenda, so it doesn't need to wait until a listening session, and it may not be available before this listening session. I want to remind the public and each other that there is a portal for public comments that Jonah provides to this board, should anybody want to comment between meetings. And I think that the public may be a little bit lethargic with that number of meetings in a row. I would suggest that we wait until February.
Okay. So you're saying cancel the December 18th. Okay. Tom?
December tends to be a lower attendance month for, for all of our meetings, anyway. Generally, the meeting before the holiday tends to be a fairly light agenda.
Right.
I don't have a problem with meeting in January, though. You know, the budget work sessions are on Saturday mornings, which we all absolutely love.
Yes, but we do have a February listening set, we do have a February listening session set.
Already.
We have it set, yes.
So that would throw off the every other month timeline, in perpetuity?
Well, I just mean to, yeah, we have two, two in a row, two months.
Yeah.
But we could, yeah, okay, so January, yeah, so January's.
I don't hate January.
Okay. All right. So Clark, what's your druthers?
Well, again, my concern is I don't want people to interpret these meetings as being optional kind of situations. I really want folks to understand that we are here to listen to them. If they have other issues, fine, but I, I don't want to close the door on people coming in in December and speaking. As you write, you know, things, a lot of things happen in, in that timeframe. But I also think the folks who show up, the folks who participate are committed to their concerns being heard or discussed. If they don't show up, so be it. But I, I don't want to discount their options. And I, I'm, I'm all about having meetings.
Okay. So you're, so you, you're saying stay with the December date?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Jean?
I can't come December 18th, so that's fine if it's hell, but I won't be here.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to January.
All right. So then maybe what we'll do, so why don't we vote on, well, so let's have, yeah, community, yes, please. Tell us what you think.
Well, I just checked the, the Facebook Cat TV page to see how many people watched the last listening session, and it was up to 3,600 people.
Yeah, but that's not who we're talking, we're talking.
The point that I'm making is that, you know, with respect to what Nancy and Clark had said, people are watching. And that doesn't even count the, the number of people that are watching it on Cat TV in their homes.
Right. But the point of the listening session, there are two points for the listening session. One is for anyone to listen from home, but the other is it's an opportunity for people to come and talk about things that they care about. So.
The point was for us to listen.
Yeah, it's for us to listen to anything that the community wants to talk about. So it's great if people are watching from home, but we don't hear from them if they're watching from home. So we do want them, we do want to make sure people will, will come to the meeting. Of course, we can always throw a meeting, and if it, no one comes, then no one comes. Anyone else in the community that wants to share? Come on up!
Jason Fredrickson, just a quick thing about December in general. As my role at the museum, I deal with conflicts all around. So I favor having listening sessions on a regular, but December is categorically a challenge regardless of what kind of thing you're trying to get the public in. It's always, everybody is choosing what they want to do. A public listening session doesn't seem as juicy as some other kind of thing in my mind. A thought. January sounds really cool, though.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have a thought on this? All right. So should we vote on whether we have a December 18th meeting?
What do you have for January?
I, I, January's more open. I don't, I.
You don't have a date?
We didn't look at it. We were looking, yeah, we were looking at whether there was an earlier date in December.
Can we ask the manager to look into mid-January for us, or do we need to decide?
Yeah, no, we could, it's coming up quick, but yeah, could, for, well, so at the November 11th meeting, we'll make a final decision?
We vote to keep it, or we vote to move it to January or something else?
Yeah. So if there is a January, are we, are we wanting to keep these on Wednesday? I mean, it's.
Wednesday tends to be the more open date.
Lightest.
There are a lot of meetings that are on Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout, throughout those months, so.
Okay. And it also is just nice for our own heads.
I'm going to look in, I'll check January.
Okay. So we're going to look at a Wednesday in January, thank you, Ed, and, and Stu, and see what we can do there. Okay. Whew. Okay. So, all right. And then, okay, and then we have the communication coordinator report attached, and including this report on public records requests in 2024, which I think probably we may want to, we may have some questions about, because I think this may actually impact the budget as well. So hopefully.
Are we allowed to ask questions about this?
Yeah, I think let's do, it is the, for those watching, there is a memo attached to the communication coordinator's report, which is a report on public records requests in 2024.
You want me to go?
Yeah, go.
Okay. So apparently Jonah is spending a tremendous amount of time dealing with FOIA requests, which I realize everyone has a right to do, and I'm not debating that at all. But what I'm wondering is, it's such an inordinate amount of time that it seems to me that Joan is not able to do his other tasks, that he, is part of his job description. So does he need an assistant? Do we need to hire someone to do only, nothing but FOIA requests?
Just for point of clarity, it's not FOIA, it's public information, because it's not federal.
Okay, public information request, thank you. That's something that I think maybe needs to be flushed out a little bit. And I know this report didn't, if anyone saw it, it doesn't include who these people are. And I don't know, I'm not an expert on this, but are we able to see who these people are? And if we are, why aren't their names being included in the report? And I'm hoping that these reports will continue going forward. And if people's names are, if it's legal to include their names, I, I hope that they are, because I think the public deserves to know who they are, especially because it's costing the town, you know, some money. What do other municipalities do in these situations? You know, where does the Secretary of State come down on this? You know, where does the Secretary of State come down on this? I, I don't know the answers to these questions, and maybe someone here does.
Yeah, I think to piggyback on that, if there were, so in the prior three years, there were approximately 39 request, public records requests a year, and this year, just since January, so we're not even through this year, there have been 300. I'm also very, very curious about what the requests are for, and I'm just wondering, I mean, Jonah, I'm, I'm hoping you'll, you'll help us understand this better, but, you know, why, what kind of requests are we getting that we've gotten from 39 to 300 in less than a year? So we're like 10 times higher, and, you know, and is it eating up a lot of your time, which I'm, it sounds like it is, looking at this?
Yeah, so first of all, I'm Jonah Spivak, I'm the communications coordinator for the town of Bennington. So I have been at this job for just about three years now, and you are correct, the first two and a half years that I was here roughly, I think I had 118 emails. And let me be clear, a lot of how, if you look at the report that I provided, a lot of it was calculated based on volume of emails, because initially, whenever I got a public records request, every request was unique, and I would just deal it on a, with a case by case basis. So 118 emails over the first two and a half years, the bulk of which from, you know, a couple of people, but, you know, that's what the, that's what it was. And I guess I would just back up and comment that the role of public records requests, and I thank you for the correction about FOIA, it's not FOIA, that's a Federal Information Act, and we call it public records requests, and it's a really important thing, and it speaks to the heart of what we do at the town, which is about transparency to the community, what we do with tax dollars. As someone who only three years ago joined town staff as being a taxpayer, a business owner in this community, that kind of transparency is absolutely vital. It's a part of my job that I really appreciate and is key to everything I do. But you are correct, that in the last year, that number has increased dramatically. So to be clear, the number of emails in the first two and a half years was 118, give or take, and again, I'm going from memory, so if I misspeak by a couple, forgive me, whereas this past year, something like 265 emails. Now, some emails, every public records request is a little different, so it may take one to three or more emails to fulfill a public records request. But because that was the data point I had, that's really the numbers we're looking at. So that is a dramatic increase. And for that, yes, the majority of that, of that 265, 199 from the top two requesters, so something like two-thirds of all requests. As a result, so you, you did ask the question, would I need an assistant? And let me be clear, it's not just my time that's being spent on these public records requests, it's all numbers of staff throughout the town offices that are involved, depending on what the request is, I will go to numerous people to get the information that's required. And in addition to the emails that I get, you know, the town manager, town assistant, select board members also getting me emails as well. So there's an additional time factor there. So, no, I'm not proposing that I need an assistant at this point, but it does make clear that the role that I was hired for includes doing public records requests. But what, the broader hope is that my, is for me to be able to provide information to the community as a whole, the larger community. And what we're seeing this year is I'm spending an inordinate amount of time providing information to just one or two individuals rather than the larger community as a whole. So I'm not seeking an assistant, but it does have a cost, in effect, and not just for me, for a, a large number of town staff. So I think that answers the first question, and to be clear, the, the goal of this report was based on a request from the select board chair to the town manager to examine what the costs are. So are we, I intentionally did not include any names, my purpose of this was not to call anybody out on this, but rather to just explain to the town at the request I received to outline what those costs are.
Can you, can you talk about how this is handled? So at a state level, if someone makes a public records request, is, my understanding is that that, I mean, public records requests are public?
Correct, yes.
Right, they're public, that's public information, both what, what was request, well, so if, if I make a public records request, then it can say Jeannie Jenkins made a request for X thing. If I make the request and the information comes to me, is it also public? Is it just the title that's public, or is it also the information you shared, or does each person have to make their own request?
So there's really one open media, or there's one public records rule or law that we all follow, whether it's the state or us. I do know that the Attorney General keeps a list, is that what you're referring to? They keep a list of public records requests they receive, and that's their choice. It is a public record, so if your question is.
Where is that list?
You can search for it, it's on the, the Secretary of State's website.
It's on the website, okay.
Yeah, they do have a list of all the public records requests they have received, and certainly any public records request that we have received becomes a public record. With very few exceptions, pretty much everything that the town has, every record we have, is a public record, and something that's available to the public to view.
Including the record of a public records request?
Yeah, yeah, and you did ask for some examples of the types of things that people are requesting, and I should note that in response to the amount of time that we've been spending on public records requests this year, I have formalized the system that we use to make it more regular, to just be a time saver. For example, I don't custom write each email response now, I now have standardized responses for the different typical requests we receive, and we apply that equally, so we treat every request the same. And by the way, so regardless of the source or even anonymous, we're required to respond to anonymous requests just as we would any other public records request. But examples of requests from our, our, our top requestor, things like 1,032, 1,032 hours of video of the front of the building of the town offices, a list of all grants applied for by the town, minutes from planning commission meetings, select board meetings, and packets, and newspaper notices from 2017 or 2018. And then, kind of to your question, a whole series of public records requests seeking information about other people making public records requests. So it's not even information specifically about the town, we're sort of inserted in the middle of, of, of these other conversations. In addition, so those are good examples of the types of, of requests we've been getting, but emails between town staff and FEMA or the EPA, emails between communications or the community development director, organizational leaders, emails between Stuart Hurd or the assistant manager to other entities.
So it's not, yeah, so it's not, I mean, it feels like, so, I mean, I was thinking that maybe the topics were things that we should be aware of. I mean, if someone asks for a public records request, it feels to me like it's either because they can't find the information on the website, which Planning Commission knows, I'm hoping that you just directed them to where the Planning Commission minutes are, but.
We go back three years for the Planning Commission, but not seven or eight.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
So for the seven or eight-year-old ones, we have to go to storage for those.
Okay.
But if it is up there in, on the town website?
Correct.
So much of the public information, much of the information that's being requested by the public is already provided to the public unless it's back that far?
Well, if you're talking about select board meetings, I think that goes back five years, it depends on the different boards, how many years it goes back.
Those requesting emails between the town manager and people, so those wouldn't be on there.
No, so those, I understand. Correct, and for that, we go to the, you know, so my process is, when I get a public records request, first of all, I, I reply and let them know that I will let them know within three days, and depending on what the nature of the request is, that gives me three days to contact various staff within the town, find out who, where those records are. If it's a simple request, something that takes less than half an hour, we always just do it. But I start by asking that question, these are the requests, the records that are being requested, how much time do you think it'll take? And then they tell me how much time it takes, I compile that, I respond to the requestor. If it's less than half an hour, we just do it, I send the information out. If it's more than that, we are allowed by the state, according to his fee schedule they provided, to ask for funds to offset the cost. So we can charge people, but the amount we charge is relatively small, and it, it just offsets the actual cost.
Well, I see that we charged $27 out of the $15,000 that we spent on.
That's correct.
Public records, we got $27 to offset it? Talk about cost savings. So it feels like, yeah, it feels like you're spending a lot of time, I am worried that, that things that we want you to be, you know, like you, you draft the policy, the policies for us, you pull information for us for, for meetings, and.
He maintains our website and the records that are on it for the public.
And you are, yes, and you are responsible for making sure the, the information's being pushed out to the community so that they don't need to be making public records requests other than here's where you find the tab on the, you know.
Yeah, that's the ideal, the more information we get out, the better in all cases, absolutely.
Is there any value, is there any value to having a place on the website that just, that just says, I mean, we just, I don't, I don't know, for any, any year, we're just tracking the kinds of requests? I mean, I thought that maybe public records requests would be things that we should be paying attention to.
Well, and to be clear, many of the topics that are being requested are things that you are hearing here, whether it's the town plan, we've had lots of requests around the town plan, we've had lots of requests around ARPA funding, so these are not new topics, certainly to the select board or people that tune in regularly.
Okay.
Jonah, let me ask a question, can a, can a, the information that you provide to a requestor be misunderstood, or can it change into a new request? I'm wondering if these requests multiply sort of organically as the result of the information that you provide to one request? Does it lead to another and then another? Or is there misunderstanding happening?
Well, we, what we don't have to do, and what we don't do is create a new record. So if a record doesn't exist, like someone wants a list of something, if I, if there's no list of something, I have to say, I'm sorry, that record does not exist.
Okay.
But they could ask for specific items that we have, and we certainly would provide those. Is, is that the multiplier effect? Because the other multiplier effect that I'm seeing with these is that, for example, we'll have a request for an invoice, but then the requestor will take that invoice and then reach out and contact the vendor who generated the invoice, or if it's related to, maybe it's a volunteer on a committee, or someone that purchased something from the town, and then they get a call from someone claiming to be a representative of the news media, which they're not, but then, we then get a call from the, the person who generated the invoice, asking us, inquiring about that, understandably, and then we spend time talking to that person and explaining things, so.
And those follow-up calls go to you as well?
Well, so to be clear, that multiplier effect is really not well documented in that cost. So that cost you see is a low, low estimate.
Boy, I can only imagine.
To the amount of time and effort that goes into this.
So, so people are using public records requests to then go, to get names of people that they then call?
That's correct.
Whether they're pri, and they're pri, like a private, a volunteer?
Could be a volunteer, it could be a, a, a private business owner, it could be an organizational leader of a different organization. So I've seen them all.
And I've heard you say that they pose as a member of the media?
One person at least has told me that, their, their question was, I got a call from someone who claimed to be with the news media, and then we have to respond to that, and it's time consuming.
Can, in a situation like that, and hopefully what you just described is rare, I don't know the answer to that, is there information to protect the business owner's privacy be redacted, or then it's not considered, that you haven't responded to the request if, if information's redacted?
There's very few cases where we redact or refuse a record, there's a, that's all dictated by the, the Secretary of State, what those exclusions are to public records requests, and they're quite few. Typically, it has to do with personnel or contracts, those are privileged information, conversations with lawyers are privileged, but very little else. In general, as it should be, the onus is on the town to deliver the records that they have in their possession. And by the way, those fees, as you see, you can get a lot from the town without paying anything.
Yeah.
But, but you don't have to pay anything to just view a record. So even though we would ask for charge, because that's reimbursing us for our cost to physically go copy and deliver a copy of those records, that's a real, actual cost, and we can charge to offset that, it doesn't pay us back fully. But if someone wants to just come in and view a record, that's always free, and then we literally, we sit them down with the records, they look themselves.
So looking at like the video footage, that's free to do, even though.
Well, that's correct, and initially, in that case, the requestor wanted the files delivered, and we determined that it would be, I think, if I remember exactly, it was around $600 to, to copy and provide those materials, so instead, they, they asked that we make them available to view. So then we go through all that cost and effort expense, and we make them available, and in that case, not one minute of video was viewed.
You did the work and it wasn't utilized?
Correct.
So it does feel like there is a, there is a.
Well, I, I want to be cautious here, though.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
I would not recommend that we do anything to abridge or curtail public records requests in any way.
Understood.
That is a vital function, so as long as we're clear about that.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, so I, I mean, you know, when I heard that the Secretary of State's office puts it on their website, because it might be of interest to other people to see what kinds of public records requests have been made, and it just makes it.
Happy to do that, but if the purpose is just to outpeople by name, you're just going to have more anonymous requests.
Well, I, yeah, I do think.
Because remember, we will honor anonymous requests.
Yes, no, I do get it, that the 75% will all of a sudden become 75% anonymous, I, I get that, that, and those two people, yes, I do understand that. So, and it, but it sounds to me like there's not, the data that you're getting is not data that's going to help us make sure that we understand, I mean, you know, it's a listening session in a sense, a public record, because you're looking at what do people want to know about? So I don't know, it feels, I am going to say out loud, it feels like it has a chilling effect, and it feels like, if, if they're going out to other people and then, like volunteers, that is bullying, and I am just really a bit, a bit stunned that that is a, that public record request can be manipulated in that fashion.
And I would say in general, the vast majority are perfectly fine, respectful, it's, it's what we do and happy to do it. That is what the majority of requestors are like.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that.
My concern is twofold. Number one is, that's a heck of a lot of data or efforts on your part taking place, but what I really wondering, the individuals who are making these requests, what has precipitated this torrent of requests? I mean, have you been able to look at any social, political, legislative events within town governance that seems to be a precipitating event to generate these? All of a sudden, you're saying in the last, what, nine months?
Yeah.
You've had this, this, this maelstrom of requests?
Yep.
What, what has happened in that timeframe to precipitate these actions? And the individuals involved? Again, as I said, on more than one occasion here, when I speak to people in town, there's more than a few people tell me they're not satisfied with the responses or the interactions they have with, whether it be us, the selected, select board, town staff, whatever. So my concerns are what has precipitated this deluge in requests, and what have, what can we do to calm people's concerns to the point where they're barraging you and the town with all these requests? What can we do?
Yeah.
Or what have we done to precipitate it?
Yeah, so the top requestors are not new, they've been top requestors for a long time, but in terms of the increase, I really can't speculate on that, but it was really around, you know, I noticed the. you know, I noticed the increase starting around late spring, early spring, somewhere around March. And in terms of, if the person that's complained to you about not getting enough attention, if that happens to be the same person, we, I have literally spent dozens and dozens of hours interacting with this one individual. And if that person feels like we're not spending enough time communicating with him, then I honestly don't know what else we can do.
I, my comment was more of broad spectrum, why, I'm not pointing out any one person.
I have not had that feedback from, yeah, I have not heard that feedback, have you heard that feedback from more than just one person, or...
Yeah, yes, I have, unfortunately. But that rolls into another area, another area that we touched on briefly, the concern over what some folks may consider rude, inflammatory, vile comments that show up on CAT TV, is those commentaries, do they seem to parallel this bump up in these requests?
Could you, I guess I'm not quite sure, because the, most of the, as I said, most of the requests we receive are very respectful, but from, they're not always respectful.
Uh huh.
And the same people that typically say disrespectful things online are the same people that are saying disrespectful things on their public records.
As I was saying, I remember we were given a packet a few meetings ago, that looks like they began around last March or April, those commentaries that were posted on CAT TV?
I think, I think that we were unaware, some of us were unaware that CAT TV had Facebook until, until further along. So I think it was only when the public started commenting, so I don't know, I don't, I don't even know how long Facebook, CAT TV has had Facebook. Has that been a number of years?
Yes.
Probably 2019.
2019, okay, I have no idea, I've never looked at it.
But the documents provided us in a packet a few meetings ago...
They went back a few months, but they didn't go back that far.
Right, I don't think, maybe April or May is when those...
I don't recall them going back that far.
But again, they seem to be in the spring slash early summer timeframe with these comments that were given to us as being problematic. And you're describing this, this, this deluge of requests is pretty much originating in late winter, early spring. So I'm wondering if there's some correlation between these concerns that out there in the public land that people feel that's their only recourse to respond to what they consider either lack of response, officiousness, whatever. So that's what my concern, or my question is, what's precipitating this? What can we, as a board or as a community, do to ease people's concerns where they don't feel compelled to barrage you or the town offices with all these requests?
Yeah, no, my gut feeling is more information is always better. You know, the more information that the public has, the better they're able to understand what's going on, and the less gaps there are to be filled in with misinformation, and that's, that's where the real problems come in.
I just think it's important to mention that we're talking about one or two people that are causing this delay, which is really, if you guys know, you could get to those one or two people and make them feel more comfortable.
What you've said is that 75% of your requests are coming from two requesters, and one is in a...
And one being the vast majority of that.
One being three times higher than the second one.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
So...
That's outlined in that report.
Well, that, it's, it's in here.
That's outlined in that report.
It's $10,199 in staff time just for, just since January, and during that time, we got $27 to offset. And then we had another $5,000, we had another $6,000 in legal fees that resulted.
And I think the budgetary cost, if you're thinking about budgets, the legal fees would be the one that you might need to consider, but in terms of my time, it's part of my job, happy to do it, I'm getting paid to do it, it's my honor and pleasure to serve the community in this way.
Well, I do, I mean, I do think they're budgetary concerns here, so I, you know, I think it's important for us to see this. I do, even though you don't think you need an assistant, I am worried if this doesn't, I mean, if this calmed down, then, yeah, you'd be doing public records requests, you know, like, like you have in the past, which is one, you know, one a week, essentially.
Yeah.
But this is, this is 10 a week.
And you can't put a price or a cost on the stress level of you and everyone else on the, in the staff and the town office who's working on these as well. And they're, and I'm not saying stress fulfilling the request, I'm saying stress, like, now they can't do the other things that they need to be doing. You know, that's an awful way to have to be working day to day, is never having enough time to do your job.
But I would say that more important is the, the point that I think Ed raised, that the, or maybe the chilling effect on, on others who get pulled into this.
That's what I'm saying.
Volunteers, that, that's my concern, I mean, we're town staff, we're getting paid to do this work, happy to do it. So we're not crying a river here for, for our role and what we have to do. But it is a concern when they're reaching out to vendors or volunteers and berating them, or other community leaders, and that, that's, that's a valid concern.
All right, so, I mean, this was, this was in the packet, Ed and I had been, had been told that the numbers were really high. We asked that the numbers be compiled to the extent they could be, and a cost associated with it. So as we think about staffing, we're also, we're also thinking about, you know, how much, this is 5,000 on top of what we would normally pay counsel, so, and, and a lot of your staff time, so, thank you.
You know, I kind of would like to have heard about this sooner than later.
I had done an initial, oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm not talking, I mean, if within the select board, our conversations, you know, I looked at the package and saw this, but it, it's apparent that it's not a recent event, this has been going on for a while.
So Clark, yeah, we asked, we actually asked for these numbers four, four, four or five months ago at this point. So it is, when we first heard that there'd been a huge uptick, we asked that that information be gathered, and it's taken, I think, because, partially because it's being done between, between everything else.
I understand what you're saying, I'm saying, but that you were aware of a potential problem, and I discovered this when I picked up the packet last week.
That is, that is because until we got this information, we didn't know how, you know, it's one thing, it's like, gee, I think I'm spending a lot of time doing X, and you're like, okay, can you quantify it? So what we asked was for Jonah to quantify this so that we could see if there really was a problem, and there clearly really is a problem. I didn't see this until the packet.
No, we're seeing this, we're seeing the results of that tonight, Clark, just like you are. Tonight is when it became available.
No, 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 it's not that you're saying, the point of the matter is that you had concerns about it weeks or months ago and didn't share those concerns with the rest of the board, that's all.
That's because we weren't sure if there were real concerns. Until the data was pulled, we didn't know if this was, just it felt like it was an uptick, or if it really was.
Yeah, and to be clear, I did talk about it in my May report, and I think it was after that, and it did take a long time, and then there's just scheduling issues. So, by the way, those numbers that I'm quoting were as of September 30th, so they're already 28 days out of date.
June, July, so actually, it was after your May report that we said, can you pull this together? So it's actually been almost, yeah, it's, it's taken, it's taken a while. And I, you know, if we, sometimes we think things are going on and they're not, so I think that's why, that's why we weren't bringing it to the board until we knew that it really did, it really, it really was worthy of our attention. Okay, so, and it's something to consider on the budget, I, you know, I, I think we do need to do that.
Can I just ask one more quick question?
Yeah.
The 5,000, or 6,000, or almost 6,000 for legal counsel, that was for the two, the two opinions that we released, what, a month or so ago, a couple months ago? That's what those are for?
It did include those two opinions.
It did, okay, okay.
It wasn't solely that. I just asked their lawyer to give me a, a number for all public records requests.
Because they were involved in.
Correct.
Right, because you often will have to ask counsel whether, how to respond, or whether something can be shared, or sort of thing.
Correct, exactly.
Those two opinions we discussed, I didn't believe those were related to public information requests. That those were dealt with, at least from my understanding, internal discussions between the select board and town manager, I know at least precipitated at least one of those. So I don't recall that being linked to a information request from a member of the public.
Yeah, that's a very good point. They, those, I'm glad you brought that up, because they weren't just public records requests, but you may recall, one was regarding ARPA, whether or not the ARPA protocols had been followed for things like the skate park. And that was a public records request that was part of that. The other one was regarding notice of whether a meeting was properly warned, and that also was a public records request. So it wasn't the public records request that stimulated the request, it was actually the select board that asked for those additional costs, but they were related to public records. But you're correct, it wasn't driven by a public records request. I would say it was an example of something that came out of a public records request.
Sort of a piggyback.
But, but you're right, it was not directly the result of a public records request. I did not call the lawyer asking for that opinion because of the public records request, that came from the board.
Okay. All right, is this enough on this topic? Because, believe it or not, we have need, we'll have to do other business, let's try and do it fast, and then we have need for executive session. Oh, yes, please, go ahead, yes.
Jackie Matts, Bennington, Vermont. I wonder, I share Jonah's concern about outside organizations, entities being contacted and stuff. In my other life, as like an IT director, we have a lot of compliance requirements that we have to, we have to meet. Particularly, if we have like a data breach or a leak or something, we're required to proactively reach out to the individuals whose information has, has gotten out there, and let them know that that's happened, so that then they're aware, like, it's in the back of their head, that like if somebody reaches out, tries to scam them something, like they know that, like, oh, okay, like it'll click in their head, like somebody's got my information. I don't know if, if, I'm not trying to make more work for the communications coordinator, but I wonder if there is a possibility that they could reach out to someone and say, listen, your information was provided, subject to a records request, we just want you to be aware.
Totally noted.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's, that's an interesting thing to, to think about.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
A question on the manager's report.
Okay.
Upper Gate Street, still. Was that project supposed to be finished this year? Was it a one-year project?
I can't answer that question. I think it was intended to be finished this year, but we did run into some issues, some contractor generated, some not, that required a redo of a couple of the side streets, and that has slowed us down.
And this is a, somebody you bid the job out to, outside group doing the work?
That is correct.
Have we used the group before?
No.
Well, maybe, maybe we need to keep a lot of projects in-house then. Has anybody contacted the people in the neighborhood, actually given them a notice to let them know this is going into next year?
We, we, we noticed people through the, through the banner, through our road operations reports, I don't think we go door to door. We have talked to individuals who have stopped to ask us. The crew on site now is mostly town crews, and we're doing sidewalk and drainage work that we contemplated doing after this project was completed. So the, the water line replacement is now done, but it took us longer to get that done than we had hoped.
And the work that had to be redone, who's paying for that?
The contractor.
Okay. If somebody wants to write up a notice so people understand what's going on and going into next year, I'll take them around, knock on doors, tape it. I think it's unfair that the people up in the neighborhood, if it's going into two years, they have a right to know why. I think that's just common courtesy.
Well, we don't know that it's going to go into two years at the present time.
Can I apologize, I hate to cut in, but they, the people in Gate Street were noticed, they had notices put on their door, and there was...
Well, that's what I wanted to know.
And there was a follow-up notice as well, and I apologize, I didn't mean to cut in, but I see where you're going with it, and I just wanted to be clear that that is happening, so...
So since this thing has, well, I read that they're going to use a patch or something for the winter, right?
That's correct. And they were notified of that, I believe, a couple, few weeks ago, so you're absolutely right, they, you know...
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure. Reading the fourth, I think this is the fourth update on the tennis court, not satisfied, but I'll check with you and other town staff to try to track down the information I need. That's it.
In the interest of time, let's please make other business really quick. I have no other business, I think it's...
Nothing for me. Positive, DPW crew did some work in front of my house. Professional expedition, quality work. Thank you, DPW crew.
MAU is performing "Beauty and the Beast," November 7th through 9th, tickets are on sale.
Nancy?
Ben High Project. The point where we are right now with the Ben High Project is totally unacceptable. I'd be generous saying that Bennington residents have heard 25% of what they should have. I really think we need to put this out to the voters in December.
Thank you.
Anybody know? Anybody who's truly concerned about rights, ethical behavior, inclusion, transparency, get your hands on the very first lease, lease to own agreement, that was signed two years ago. Read, I think, the second page. Understand the rights of the public. Understand how that situation was never handled properly. And I hope when this is on the agenda, it can't be one meeting, we're going to have at least two. They should be two to three-hour discussions, and at this point, Bennington voters should decide in December before the clock runs out.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, could I have a motion to go into executive?
Did we pass this over upcoming?
Oh, we did, didn't we? Okay, the next agenda.
We have traffic calming on it.
And I believe we, it sounds like we may have something from the BBC to accept, for them to accept a grant, and I am thinking...
Ed Shannon?
Nope. I was thinking there was one other thing that...
Oh, CPAR for the...
Oh, charter, no, are you, no, 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 never mind the charter, somebody. Okay, I don't know, that's all I know. Traffic calming is the big thing, yeah, yeah. I can't, they're...
Here, here are my notes from last time.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay, yeah, okay, yeah, I think it's, that's the only big thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, executive session, can we do that while we're still awake?
I make a motion, let me move into executive session, please.
Second.
Thank you to the public.
All the, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming and sticking it out and for commenting.